Buenos días, buenos días. Bienvenidos a todos a la sede del Congreso de Guam. El día de hoy se celebrará una audiencia pública por el Comité de Finanzas y Operaciones del Gobierno y se ha llamado a ordenar a esta hora 9:05. La primera noticia de audiencia pública fue diseminada a todos los senadores y medios de comunicación el 14 de febrero de 2025, con su segunda noticia disiminada el 19 de febrero de 2025. Estas noticas de audiencia también fueron disponibles en el sitio web de la legislatura de Guam, el calendario legislativo y el portal de noticia pública de Guajam. Esta mañana el comité escuchará testimonio sobre el proyecto 10-38 COR y es relativo a los beneficios de la seguridad de vida y oficiales de la seguridad pública y de la policía del Gobierno de Guam que han muerto en la línea de servicio. También escucharán el proyecto número 3438 presentado por el senador vicepresidente Tony Ada y esto es relativo a los empleados que renuncian al empleo gubernamental de Guajam para presentar y pasar pruebas de drogas para rechazar o mantener derechos de reempleo si esa renuncia fue promulgada en 30 días después del anuncio del empleador de pruebas de drogas y requerir a los empleados de presentar pruebas de drogas antes de reempleo. También escucharán el proyecto número 25-38 COR presentado por el senador Tina Rose Munia Barnes y esto es relativo a la actualización de las exigencias de audiencia pública autorizando la publicidad de noticias en periódicos electrónicos y sitios web localmente licenciados. A esta hora me gustaría bienvenir a mis colegas que están aquí con nosotros hoy. Tenemos, por supuesto, a nuestro vicepresidente y vicepresidente del comité, el senador Tony Ada. También nos acompaña el senador Lohan, el senador Gumatautau, el senador Borja, el senador Tina Rose Munia Barnes, el senador Chely Calvo y el senador Chris Barnett. Gracias por acompañarnos esta mañana. Y como vuelvo al primer proyecto, por supuesto, nuestro autor es el senador Sean Gumatautau. Antes de empezar, me gustaría recordar a todos los participantes de las reglas generales del Gobierno de Guam. Los testigos primero serán reconocidos por la persona encargada antes de hablar y expondrán su nombre completo para fines de registro. Cuestiones y testimonios deben estar confinados a la sustancia y naturaleza del proyecto o naturaleza de la agenda. La inferencia personal al carácter o motivo de cualquier senador o individuo testigo no es permitido. La persona encargada del comité puede ordenar la despedida de la audiencia de cualquier miembro del Gobierno de Guam o de la audiencia pública que fracasa en observar el decorum de acuerdo a las reglas de la legislatura de Guam 38. Cualquier violación a esta regla general de conducta resultará en la despedida inmediata de la audiencia pública. Con eso, ahora procederemos a escuchar el testimonio sobre el proyecto 10-38 COR, una vez más presentado por el senador Sean Gumatautau y una vez más es relativo a los beneficios de la seguridad de vida y oficiales de la seguridad pública y de la policía del Gobierno de Guam que han muerto en la línea de servicio. A esta hora reconoceré al autor, el senador Sean Gumatautau, para hacer su declaración de abertura sobre el proyecto.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente, por esta audiencia pública sobre el proyecto 10-38 COR y por la oportunidad de presentar la medida. Antes de proceder con mis comentarios de abertura, respetablemente pido un momento de silencio para honrar a los 18 hombres y mujeres de la historia de nuestras agencias de seguridad pública y de la policía que han perdido sus vidas en la línea de servicio. Oficero conservatorio Francisco M. Isisaki, patrón Francisco D. Titegui, patrón Juan M. Santos, agente DEA Larry D. Wallace, oficial de policía uno Francisco A. Regis, oficial de policía tres Tomás M. Sablon, oficial de reserva de policía Helen K. Luzama, oficial de reserva de policía Rudy C. Iglesias, oficial de policía uno Raymond Sánchez, oficial de policía uno Manuel A. Aquino, lieutenant de policía Francisco C. Tovas, oficial de correcciones Douglas W. Mashburn, oficial de policía uno Eddie A. Santos, sargento de la Fuerza Aérea de Estados Unidos Stacy E. Lovey, sargento de policía Frankie E. Smith, sargento de policía Sicfree D. Mortera, oficial de tráfico Renee Toomanda, oficial de correcciones Glenn T. F. Martinez. Una vez más, si puedo obtener un momento de silencio para estos hombres y mujeres. ¿Podemos levantarnos por eso, por favor? Gracias a todos. Por favor, procedan, senador Gumatautau.
Sí, gracias, señor presidente, y una vez más gracias a todos. Nuestra comunidad es siempre agradecida por el sacrificio que estos oficiales muertos y sus familias han hecho en servicio a nuestra isla. Si se adopta el proyecto 10-38 aumenta los beneficios de la seguridad de vida de $10,000 a $100,000 para los oficiales de la seguridad pública y de la policía que han muerto en la línea de servicio. La propuesta reconoce que debido a las demandas físicas y mentales que se plantean en la seguridad pública y en la policía, la legislatura de Guam ha tomado pasos importantes en los últimos años para incentivar la retención y la reclutación, en particular frente a las oportunidades de trabajo competitivas ofrecidas por el sector privado y las agencias públicas de seguridad federal y de la policía. Además de financiar, ajustes de compensación para los empleados en todas las agencias de seguridad pública y de la policía de Guam separadas del ajuste de salarios de 2024 de la GPD, la legislatura de Guam autorizó a los empleados a retirarse de una anulación de jubilación una vez que alcanzaran 55 años de edad y completen 25 años de servicio o alcancen al menos 57 años de edad y completen cinco años de servicio. Los empleados de la seguridad pública y de la policía de la seguridad pública no son más sujetos a penales de jubilación temprana establecidos para personajes de la seguridad pública y de la policía. Señor presidente, mientras estaba redactando el proyecto 10-38, reconozco que otras jurisdicciones de Estados Unidos han establecido sus respectivas políticas de beneficio de muerte proporcionadas por el estado para los oficiales de la seguridad pública y de la policía que han muerto en la línea de servicio. Estas jurisdicciones incluyen, pero no son limitadas a la Comercio de la Isla de Noruega, el estado de Rhode Island y el estado de Vermont. Señor presidente, a beneficio de nuestros colegas y la audiencia oyendo, la CNMI permite una pago de $50,000 para los sobrevivientes de un oficero de la policía que murió como resultado directo y aproximado de una lesión personal obtenida en la línea de servicio, independientemente del estado de Rhode Island. proporciona a un esposo sobreviviente de la policía y niños con un beneficio de muerte de un tiempo igual a el 40% del actual beneficio federal de muerte de la policía que ha muerto en la línea de servicio. El estado de Vermont autoriza un beneficio de muerte de un tiempo en el valor de $50,000 a los beneficiarios de todos los personajes de la Diputación de la Vermonta de la Seguridad Pública. Señor presidente, ofrezco el proyecto 10-38 como parte de un enfoque legislativo más amplio para la reclutación y la retención de oficiales en todo nuestro gobierno, en particular en un momento en el que nuestras agencias gubernamentales de Guajam continúan perdiendo empleados a entidades federales y militares más rápido que nuestro gobierno local es capaz de llenar estas vacantes críticas. Los oficiales de la policía son rutinariamente esperados para manejar situaciones de intensidad, estresantes o delicadas situaciones de seguridad pública. Repetida exposición a incidentes críticos desde JIGO hasta Molesto puede a menudo conducir a desaparición o a un declive en la salud mental de los oficiales afectados en todas nuestras agencias de seguridad pública. El proyecto 10-38 hace mucho para dar paz de ánimo a la seguridad y bienestar de nuestros oficiales en el campo y sus familias que esperan a ellos en casa después de largos cambios. Creo que las políticas como el proyecto 10-38 pueden actuar como una herramienta para aumentar la reclutación y la retención de profesionales de la policía. Ofrecer nuevos beneficios potencialmente atraer candidatos de trabajo a las agencias públicas de seguridad de Guam hoy y en los años a venir. Lo más importante, señor presidente, esta propuesta reconoce el trabajo peligroso que es único a nuestra seguridad pública y a los oficiales de la policía y el apoyo que nuestro gobierno debe y debe proporcionar a las familias de nuestros oficiales muertos en su mayor momento de necesidad. Cuando un oficero está muerto en la línea de servicio, los miembros de la familia sobrevivientes no son las únicas personas afectadas. Colectivos de oficiales trabajando en nuestras agencias públicas de seguridad de Guam y a menudo aquellos en otras agencias de la policía federal y de la seguridad pública de Guam, sienten que esa pérdida es bastante pesada. Tener una política como el proyecto 10-38 muestra que nuestras agencias de la policía están preparadas para situaciones estresantes y están preocupados por la salud mental y el bienestar de nuestros oficiales, las familias sobrevivientes de los oficiales y nuestra comunidad isla. Señor presidente, espero las presentaciones de esta mañana y trabajar con su comité y los interesados para avanzar el proyecto 10-38. Solo un par de cosas más para decir hoy. Agradezco los cambios sugeridos que han sido presentados a nuestra, que han sido presentados por nuestra liderazgo de seguridad pública y nuestra dirección por correo electrónico y los llamados telefónicos que recibí antes de la audiencia de hoy. Mi oficina trabajará con el comité de finanzas mientras consideramos recomendaciones específicas que actualizarán posiciones cubiertas de acuerdo a las leyes establecidas y clarificarán esas situaciones cuando la muerte de un oficero en la línea de servicio puede ser eligible para el aumento del beneficio de la seguridad de vida. Sí, gracias, señor presidente, por el tiempo.
Sí, senador Gumatautau. Tenemos bastante lista de gente para venir, así que voy a comenzar con la primera lista que entró, John Canata de la GIA, jefe Darian Burrier, senador, por favor, adelante. Y una vez más, bienvenido senador a la sede del Congreso de Guam. También tenemos a Vince Perez, jefe. Y podemos incluir a algunos más en la segunda lista de inscripción. Aquí tenemos a nuestro agente, Doug Moylan, por favor, adelante. Jefe Steve Ignacio, por favor, adelante. Desde el agente, está bien. Y eso es todo lo que se inscribió para el testimonio oral en este momento. Así que voy a comenzar en el orden que entró, así que senador Canata, eres primero.
Gracias, senador Duñez. Buenos días, senadores de la legislatura de Guam. Mi nombre es John M. Canata. Soy el gerente ejecutivo de la Autoridad Aérea Internacional Guajam. Me gustaría agradecer a los senadores Tony Ada, Jesse Lohan, el autor, Sean Gumatautau, senador Borja, senador Tina Rose Munia Barnes, mi novato de la esposa. Senador Chely Calvo, senador Chris Barnett, senador Teletitigui, gracias por haberme dado la oportunidad de testificar en apoyo del proyecto 10-38 relativo a los beneficios de la seguridad de vida para los oficiales de la seguridad pública y de la policía que han muerto en la línea de servicio. El proyecto 10 modifica 4403B, 4303C1, todos los artículos 3, capítulo 4, título 4, código de Guajam anotado, con la intención de proporcionar seguridad pública y oficiales de la policía como definido en 4GCA 8501M, con cobertura de la seguridad de vida hasta una cantidad de 100,000 dólares si el oficero está muerto en la línea de servicio. Diariamente, nuestros oficiales de la seguridad pública y de la policía protegen a la gente y la propiedad, cumplen leyes, responden a las emergencias y trabajan para prevenir y resolver actividades criminales. En esta era moderna, estos deberes vienen con una gama de riesgos inherentes a los cuales otras categorías de empleados no pueden ser directamente expuestas. Los beneficios de la seguridad de vida para los oficiales de la seguridad pública y de la policía que han muerto en la línea de servicio es importante ya que proporciona seguridad financiera para las familias que estos oficiales pueden dejar atrás. proporciona asistencia financiera para los costos de la cumbre funeral y en una forma pequeña puede dar paz de ánimo a los oficiales y a sus familias que habrá alguna reparación financiera por los riesgos diarios que enfrentan en su desaparición en la línea de servicio. Entendemos que el Departamento de Administración está cargado con la adquisición y contratación del contrato de la seguridad de vida de grupo para el Gobierno de Guam y que los empleados de la Autoridad Aérea Internacional Guajam proveen de dichos beneficios y cubren los costos de dichos contratos y premios que finalmente se negocian. También entendemos que puede necesitar haber un ajuste en los premios de la seguridad de vida para aumentar estos beneficios, pero tal ajuste puede ser mejor calculado por la agencia de contratación. La GIA notes que la definición de la seguridad pública y de la policía encontrada en 4GCA 8501M incluye a los oficiales de la policía aérea y personal de seguridad y a los bomberos de la Autoridad Aérea Internacional Guajam de Antonio B. Wampenny. La GIA notes que actualmente los empleados de la GIA, aproximadamente 106 empleados que caen bajo esta definición en tanto nuestra policía aérea como las divisiones de rescate aérea. Una vez más, gracias por la oportunidad de presentar testimonio en apoyo del proyecto 10-38. Después de que terminemos, me gustaría dar algunas recomendaciones fuera de este testimonio y tal vez recomendaciones que reducirán el impacto en cuanto a los premios y la forma en que otras jurisdicciones o incluso el ejército hace esto, así.
Gracias, senador. ¿Será que proporcionará en formato escrito o usted va a discutirlo?
Probablemente escrito, pero lo discutiré, pero tal vez mientras avanzemos te dará algunas ideas, correcto, para reducir el impacto de financiar esto en lugar de hacer a través de los premios de la seguridad de vida es posiblemente financiado por sí mismo porque como usted dijo, solo hay 18 en los últimos, ¿cuántos años? Y si vamos a estar pagando premios anualmente, creo que para el gobierno es mucho mejor poner una botella de dinero en el lado solo para esto, donde cada vez que sucede entonces viene de esta botella en lugar de nosotros pagando un premio anual o anual por esto que va a costar dramáticamente, especialmente para la GPD o nosotros solo mirándolo, tiene un impacto de 182,000 dólares en nosotros en una base anual si fuéramos a poner esto en nuestros premios de seguridad de vida.
Gracias, senador. En realidad, tendremos el comité considerando eso durante los marcados en el proyecto y gracias por su testimonio. Jefe Burrier, por favor, proceda.
Buenos días.
Por favor, apague su micrófono, jefe, y identifique a usted mismo para el registro.
Buenos días, mi nombre es Darren Burrier, jefe de la policía de Guam, miembro de la policía. Gracias por esta mañana, darte la oportunidad de hablar en apoyo del proyecto 10-38. Antes de comenzar, me gustaría, y aprecio todos los nombres de los muertos siendo reconocidos, senador, muchas gracias. Me gustaría ser capaz de agregar a esa lista si pudiera. Tenemos dos bomberos que están en el memorial de los bomberos muertos en Emmitsburg, Maryland, en la Academia Nacional de Fire, y ese es el bombero James A. Pereira y el bombero Vincent J. Cruz.
Como hemos prestado respeto anteriormente, ¿podemos también levantar un momento de Gracias a todos, por favor, proceda, jefe.
Senador Munia, senador Duñez, senador Ada, Lohan, senador Gumatautau, senador Borja, senador Barnett, senador Titegui, senador Calvo, gracias por esta oportunidad. Esteimos miembros de la legislatura 38, estoy aquí para expresar mi apoyo inequívoco para el proyecto número 10-38, que busca aumentar las políticas de seguridad de vida para los muertos en la línea de servicio de los personajes de la seguridad pública y de la policía. Esta legislación no es solo una política de ajuste, es una poderosa declaración de nuestro compromiso colectivo con los hombres y mujeres valientes que ponen sus vidas en la línea para proteger nuestras comunidades todos los días. Los oficiales de la seguridad pública y los oficiales de la policía enfrentan riesgos sin paralelismo en parte de sus deberes diarios. Los peligros inherentes de su trabajo exigen no solo nuestro respeto, sino también el apoyo tangible para ellos y sus familias. Actualmente, las políticas de seguridad de vida en juego no pueden cubrir suficientemente los cargos financieros enfrentados por las familias de estos héroes en el caso de sus muertes en el tiempo. Al aumentar los beneficios de la seguridad de vida, podemos asegurar que las familias de los oficiales muertos son adecuadamente apoyadas. Este apoyo es crucial en ayudarlos a navegar los estrés financieros inmediatos como los gastos de cumbre funeral, pagos de hipotecas, proporcionando educación dependiente. Lo más importante es el reconocimiento del sacrificio ultimate hecho por estos individuos corajosos. El incremento propuesto en la política de seguridad de vida también servirá como un empuje moral para los oficiales de la seguridad pública y de la policía actuales y de los personajes de la policía, asegurándoles que sus contribuciones y sacrificios son reconocidos y valorados, sabiendo que sus familias serán cuidadas en el caso del peor caso, les permite performar sus deberes con más paz de ánimo. En conclusión, apoyar el proyecto número 10-38 es un testamento de nuestra dedicación a los servidores públicos que dedican sus vidas a nuestra seguridad. Es nuestro deber asegurar que nosotros como sociedad les proporcionamos la seguridad y paz que merecen y pido a todos los miembros de esta legislatura 38 de Guam votar en favor de esta legislación crítica. Gracias.
Gracias, jefe Burrier, aprecio su testimonio. Y ahora pasaremos a nuestro fiscal general, del fiscal general del oficio, señor Moylan, por favor, proceda.
Buenos días, jefe Duñez, mi jefe de supervisión, Teletitigui, senador Barnett, vicepresidente Ada, jefe Lohan, jefe Gumatautau, así como senadores Borja y Barnes. Mi testimonio en apoyo al proyecto número 10-38 se presentó a cargo de mi oficina electa y de nuestro cliente, el pueblo de Guam. Esta legislación protege a los agentes de la policía que protegen a nuestra gente. Como redactado, encourages el empleo en ciertas posiciones de la policía local. Recomiendo una expansión de su alcance para oficiales de paz y oficiales judiciales. Es común que una comunidad que espera que los oficiales de la policía placean sus vidas en la línea también apoye a sus familias si ese servicio público corta su vida. Basado en el razonamiento contenido dentro de la legislación propuesta, recomiendo que el alcance de las personas eligible a beneficiar esta decisión de política pública aplique el universo existente de oficiales de paz ya definido en Guajam, en la Guajam ley bajo 8GCA, sección 5.55, y a oficiales judiciales. Todos arriesgamos todo sirviendo al pueblo de Guam en una profesión que puede ser peligrosa y también puede crear intrínsecamente enemigos peligrosos que buscan revender y retribución por un servicio público. Es el pueblo de Guam el que es el Gobierno de Guam y la fuerza financiera de nuestra gente debe traducirse en una legislación que proporciona un neto de seguridad a aquellos queridos que han dejado atrás. Como los sobrevivientes de la familia de la familia de los activos de servicio militares y mujeres, la legislatura de Guam debería proporcionar protección financiera a las familias de los más grandes de Guam que mueren en la línea de servicio. A medida que el proyecto pasa por el proceso legislativo, incentivamos a la legislatura a considerar un aclarado que incluya la definición de muerto en la línea de servicio. Los hallazgos del proyecto señalan apropiadamente a las demandas de salud mental planteadas sobre los primeros respondientes. Mientras no tenemos duda de que el gobierno siempre intentará y hará lo correcto para sus primeros respondientes, las consecuencias fatales de un desafío de salud mental no son tan fáciles de armar para un muerto en la línea de servicio como responder a una robo bancario o proteger los intereses de nuestra gente en el tribunal contra criminales peligrosos. A ese punto, el nexo puede no ser una decisión de política pública sabia de ir tan lejos. De igual modo, estudios muestran que nuestros bomberos incurren en riesgos de cáncer sustancialmente mayores que los demás por su exposición acumulativa a sustancias tóxicas, a menudo toxinas que acumulan con el tiempo. Cuando un bombero pasa temprano debido a cáncer, ¿debería aplicarse este proyecto? Si un oficial de policía o bombero proporciona seguridad o atención de emergencia en un evento deportivo de la escuela secundaria y está siendo pagado por la escuela y algo horrible sucede, ¿debería aplicarse el proyecto? ¿Existen exclusiones para evitar la protractiva y cara de litigio innecesaria? También creemos que el uso de oficiales de paz va a cubrir el riesgo demasiado a menudo ignorado que los oficiales de paz enfrentan al cumplir las leyes de la gente en otras diversas capacidades que los expone a la pérdida de vida a través de intentos de asesinato que incluye a los jueces y a los oficiales judiciales. Una copia de "¿Quiénes son los oficiales de paz?" está vinculada a este testimonio publicado. Sugerimos que la legislación propuesta clarifica lo más posible dónde comienza la línea de servicio y where stops y utiliza situaciones de vida real enfrentando a nuestra nación en el alcance de lo que es esencialmente una política de seguridad de vida underwritten por cada uno de nosotros, el público que paga impuestos. Gracias por esta oportunidad de comentar sobre esta legislación.
Gracias, general Moylan, aprecio su testimonio. Y ahora voy a ir a la jefa Perez, por favor, proceda.
Buenos días, honorables senadores. Mi nombre es Vincent S. Perez, soy el jefe de tráfico y estoy aquí hoy para testificar en apoyo del proyecto 10-38 COR que hace cambios a la sección 4, 303B y C1 de artículo 3, capítulo 4 de 4GCA. El proyecto 10-38 COR discute y se refiere a aquellos que han muerto en la línea de servicio, sin embargo, es silencioso en la trata de la muerte como resultado de la exposición a virus o patogénicos y muriendo más tarde, o aquellos que sufren ataques cardíacos o estrokes mientras están en servicio. Y la razón por la que estoy tocando esto es porque somos conscientes de los oficiales dentro de las comunidades de la policía, especialmente aquí en Guam, que han sido expuestos a COVID-19. Acabamos de tener un momento de silencio y uno de los oficiales mencionados era un oficial que murió como resultado de su exposición mientras trabajaba directamente con el público a COVID-19. Y mucho recientemente hubo la muerte de un oficial de policía que sufrió un ataque cardíaco o un estropeo. Así que voy a mantener mi testimonio corto. Me gustaría, tal vez, recomendar hacer algunas provisiones que se refieren a aquellos que fallecen en este método y estoy dispuesto a proporcionar testimonio escrito, lo que proporciona una manera mucho más clara hacia adelante. Gracias.
Gracias, jefa Perez, aprecio su testimonio y ahora pasaremos a la jefa Ignacio, por favor.
Gracias, senador Duñez, buenos días, honorables senadores y miembros de la legislatura 38, colegas y miembros del público. Soy Steven C. Ignacio, jefe de la policía del Departamento de Policía de Guam y aquí proveo este testimonio para expresar mi completo apoyo para la propuesta de acto de modificación de secciones 4303B y 4303C1 de artículo 3, capítulo 4, título 4GCA. Este aclaro es esencial para asegurar que los oficiales de la policía, en particular aquellos dentro del Departamento de Policía de Guam, que han muerto mientras realizan sus deberes en la línea de servicio, ya sea en servicio o fuera de servicio, proporcionan beneficios de seguridad de vida que reflejan sus sacrificios. Como jefe del Departamento de Policía de Guam, soy completamente consciente de los peligros inherentes del trabajo de la policía. Nuestros oficiales se dedican a la seguridad y el bienestar de nuestra comunidad, a menudo metiéndose en camino de daño durante tanto los horarios de trabajo programados como más allá. Trágicamente, hay momentos en los que los oficiales de la policía hacen el sacrificio ultimate en la línea de servicio, ya sea respondiendo a una emergencia, involucrándose en la prevención de crimen o tomando acción en una situación que exige su atención. Mientras este proyecto tratará las circunstancias en las que los oficiales pierden sus vidas en servicio, es crucial reconocer que muchos de nuestros oficiales enfrentan riesgos significativos fuera de servicio también. Cuando los oficiales intervienen en emergencias o actúan para proteger la seguridad pública fuera de sus cambios programados, a menudo lo hacen a gran riesgo, a gran riesgo personal. La propuesta de aclaro a 4303B extendería la cobertura a estos oficiales, asegurando que ellos y sus familias reciben beneficios de la seguridad de vida, independientemente de si el oficial estaba en servicio o fuera de servicio en el momento de su o su muerte. Además, muchos de nuestros oficiales también son llamados a realizar deberes más allá de sus reglas programadas, como mandadas por 10GCA, capítulo 77. Estas responsabilidades adicionales, ya sea como parte de asignamientos especiales, respuestas de emergencias o operaciones de alto riesgo, frecuentemente involucran situaciones donde los oficiales enfrentan el mismo nivel de peligro que tienen durante sus cambios programados. Es vital que la ley reconozca los riesgos involucrados en estos deberes extendidos y proporciona beneficios apropiados para los oficiales que mueren mientras realizan tales asignaciones. El Departamento de Policía de Guam es único en que nuestros oficiales son a menudo obligados a trabajar más allá de sus cambios programados en el servicio de la comunidad. Estos deberes extendidos pueden surgir en la forma de llamadas de emergencia, asignamientos especiales o exceso de tiempo mandatory que es esencial para mantener la seguridad pública. Mientras trabajan en estos roles, los oficiales son sujetos al mismo riesgo y peligro que cuando están formalmente en servicio. Por lo tanto, es crítico que los oficiales que trágicamente pierdan sus vidas mientras involucran estos deberes extendidos o fuera de servicio. in these extended or off-duty duties are covered by the same life insurance benefits as those who die while on duty during regular hours. This amendment will ensure that Guam Police Department officers, who are sometimes required to perform additional law enforcement duties under 10GCA Chapter 77 outside of their normal working hours, are protected. No officer should be denied the life insurance benefits they deserve simply because they were not officially on duty at the time of their death. A key aspect of this amendment is its recognition of officers killed while off-duty but still serving the public in a law enforcement capacity. Whether an officer is engaged in a crime prevention effort, intervening in an emergency, or taking proactive actions to protect others, these off-duty activities often involve significant personal risk. Officers should not be penalized or left unprotected if they are killed in the line of duty while performing such off-duty actions. In the past, there may have been confusion whether regarding off-duty officers, particularly those acting under 10GCA Chapter 77, were eligible for life insurance benefits in the event of a fatality. This amendment clarifies that officers who are killed while engaged in lawful law enforcement duties, whether on or off duty, will be entitled to life insurance benefits. I strongly urge the members of this legislative body to support this vital amendment. Our officers are some of the most dedicated and selfless public servants, and their families should be afforded the security of knowing that their loved ones' sacrifices are honored with the life insurance benefits they deserve, whether on duty, off duty, or performing duties beyond their regular work hours as mandated. Our officers should receive the same protections and support. Passage of this bill will send a strong message that we value the sacrifices made by our law enforcement officers and that we stand with them in ensuring that their families are protected in the event of a tragedy. And I hereby reiterate my support for the passage of Bill 10-38 into law and respectfully encourage members of the Imunatren Teotzun Elles Leturanguan to do the same. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to provide our comments to this bill and for your dedication and commitment to serving the best interests of our public safety and law enforcement officers who protect our community. And I'd like to close that I hope that as a Chief of Police, I would never have to pay a life insurance benefit and any other future Chief of Police after me. Thank you. And I'd also like to add to comment. Chief Perez mentioned about strokes and death, so there is something in the Public Safety Officers Benefits, the PSOB, called the Hometown Heroes Act, and that covers what Chief Perez was talking about, where an officer died versus an officer killed. And so we want to make sure that we make that distinction. And unfortunately, in this Bill 10-38, there are no definitions between killed and died because an officer may be killed, shot, run over by a car while doing a traffic pullover, and an officer may also die in the line of duty. He may be chasing a suspect, suffer a fatal heart attack, and pass away. And so that's covered under the Hometown Heroes Act of 2003, sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chief Ignacio, and I think every single one of us up here on the panel agree with you that we hope you never have to distribute that benefit, but in the realities, I think it's something that we need to take care of families of our, you know, men and women who protect us every day. So there is an additional individual to testify from the Unified Judiciary, Danielle Rosetti. Please proceed, ma'am.
Hafedeh, good morning. Danielle Rosetti, Administrator of the Courts for the Judiciary. And with me this morning, I have our Marshal of the Court Captain Leo Diaz, along with our Chief Probation Officer, Rosanna Villagomezagun. Chairman Duennas, Speaker Blas, Vice Speaker Ada, our Oversight Chair, Senator Taitigui, Senator Barnett, Senator Sabrina Salas-Matinani, Senator Calvo, Senator Luhan, Senator Gumatauto and former colleague, Senator Borja, and Senator Munia Barnes. The Judiciary of Guam extends its appreciation to submit testimony in support of Bill Number 10-38COR introduced by Senator Gumatauto relative to life insurance benefits for public safety and law enforcement officers of the government of Guam who are killed in the line of duty. Our branch recognizes the critical nature of this legislation and its implications for the families of those who serve. Currently, the judiciary has 159 law enforcement positions across the Marshal Services Division, Probation Services Division, and the Volunteer Deputy Marshal Reserve. Each of these positions is central to the delivery of justice. Our officers protect our facilities, manage and monitor court orders, and ensure the safety of jurors, judges, victims, and witnesses. Their responsibilities extend beyond courthouse walls to house checks, threat assessments, and even emergency operations during times of crisis. While we recognize the significance of this bill, we request clarification relative to the definition of line of duty. Our officers frequently provide manpower for other government of Guam agencies in reserve capacities, including the Civilian Volunteer Police Reserve at the Guam Police Department, the Conservation Officer Reserve at the Department of Agriculture, and the Territorial Park Patrol Officer Reserve at the Department of Parks and Recreation. Many also serve in the reserve components of the U.S. Military and the FEMA Reserve program. Given these roles, we request that the bill explicitly define line of duty to provide guidance in situations where an officer is fatally injured while performing duties outside their official position at the judiciary. In addition, the fiscal note from the Bureau of Budget and Management Research suggests that adjustments may be required for the cost of life insurance, which could affect our branch's budget. Although we are unable to provide a financial estimate until rate negotiations by the Department of Administration are finalized, we believe it is important to raise this potential financial impact for your consideration. We appreciate your leadership in addressing the needs of our law enforcement community, and thank you for the opportunity for providing this testimony this morning. And as a side note, while I'm not a law enforcement officer, I must say that I am a spouse of a retired captain from the Guam Fire Department. And on a personal note, recognize the sacrifices firsthand of what they have to do each day they perform their duties in law enforcement. So thank you and good morning.
Situs masi, Ms. Rosetti. And so at this time now, I would yield to the author to be able to ask any questions or make any comments that he may like to do. And I'll remind the panel that you do have five minutes for this question period. And also, before I do that, I want to recognize, and thanks, Ms. Rosetti, for handling that for me, our Speaker, Speaker Blas, thank you, and also Senator Sabrina Salas-Matinani. Please proceed, Senator Gumatauto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, I want to thank the panel for their testimony today and all of those that are here as part of this public hearing process. And the input was absolutely critical, not just for me, but for everyone that's up here in this committee. I am excited by what was said today in terms of the definitions. Obviously, I know we're going to go back to our markup and make sure that we do that. And to our elected Attorney General, thank you, sir, for your recommendations as well. I just, I think that you're absolutely right. It may have been not an oversight on my part, but adding critical peace officers and, as you mentioned, I think we and judicial officers is a big deal for all of us in this community. And thank you again. I'm just going to be listening, and thank you, Mr. Chair. One last thing is also the reference from the chief relative to DOJ's Public Safety Officers Benefits Program. Again, Chief, thanks for pointing that out to the committee, and thanks for pointing out to the community as part of this public hearing process.
Thank you, Senator Gumatauto. And once again, I'd like to welcome our colleague, Senator Teletitigui. Thank you for being with us this morning. So going to the list as they showed up today, we will now go to Senator Borja. Please proceed with your questions or comments, Senator Borja.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to everyone who has come in today to testify. I just, you know, I don't really have any questions. Just want to commend my colleague, Senator Sean Gumatauto, for this bill and the intent of this bill. And, you know, look forward to the discussion in committee in clarifying a lot of the things that were addressed during the testimony. Thank you, everybody here today. Thank you for your service and thank you for what you do for the people of Guam. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Borja. At this time, I'd like to recognize Senator Jesse Luhan. Please proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you, the panel, for coming and providing your testimony this morning. To the General, General Moylan, the definition of peace officers as defined here, you know, as the oversight for the airport, to be inclusive of airport police and ARF, I see the definition for fire department, but there's no ARF here. Is that covered under the definition?
Thank you, Chairman Luhan. As a matter of protocol, I'd also like to recognize Speaker Blas, and I believe I did not recognize Senator Salas, Senator Calvo, and Senator Barnett. So thank you for entertaining our office here today. The peace officers defined section is usually where, like, the Chief of Police and I and all the chiefs up here usually look to for purposes of special protection and special authority given to enforce our laws. And if the airport police are not identified, because since the passage of this originally, I'm sure the legislature has updated it, but we have the park police officers, we have the airport police officers, the port authority of Guam...
Airport police is covered, but the firefighters, the ARF?
Right, the airport police, right. So your question is whether it's in the peace officers definition?
Yes.
So if it's not on this list, then it would not be. I haven't seen the... And that's why I'm saying in the fire... I'm sorry, subsection M, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
The Chief of Guam Airport Police and all the police officers under N, as in Nancy? So they would be included within it?
Okay, so they would fall under the fire department or...
Well, I envision any changes to the proposed legislation would encompass not just the Guam Police Department officers and the Guam Fire Department officers, but all peace officers.
Peace officers, okay.
And I would reiterate, Chairman Luhan, that remember what this is. It's an insurance policy, and the government of Guam has now transformed into the self-insured agency. We are providing our insurance ourselves. We're the underwriter, the carrier, so to speak. The people of Guam pay all of our budgets and salaries and so forth. The autonomous agency is kind of muddled with their purposes. The utilization and the actuaries that advise the committee that negotiates the insurance, I don't really see that much of an impact when you look at who's actually died in the line of duty. If we use a common line of duty, eight to five, and, you know, as an authority of the representative of the government of Guam, including judges, prosecutors, whoever else is on this list. So I would think an actuary is not going to say that it's that much of an impact. And charging a department may not be as good as just don't charge anybody because GovGuam under our current system has the full faith and credit of the government of Guam, the general fund, to support our self-insured industry. So, and that's why I say that it would be probably a wise thing to include the definition of peace officers. But remember, judges are not in the peace officers being in the judiciary. So I would also propose that the definition of a judicial officer, including the referees, be included within this comprehensive legislation. We've never had a judge killed on the bench during his tenure, never had an Attorney General, never had a prosecutor to my mind. But this is your what-if situations. So the intent is there. Clearly, I think the people, and this is your decision as a public policymakers, want to take care of the remaining family. The money does nothing for the person killed, right? It's the family and also the recruitment aspects. So thank you, Senator Luhan.
Thank you very much, General Moylan. That's it, actually. You know what? Again, as oversight of the airport, to be inclusive of airport police, ARF, and also CQA, we share the, of course, public safety aspect, of course, with Senator Gumatauto here. So I am just very concerned and make sure that they're covered as well. One other question, and the municipal mayors and vice mayors, because we know that their staff as well, I mean, we see them out there almost on a daily basis manning, you know, the streets and things like that for funerals and all that. And I know that the mayors have been asking for hazardous pay for some of their folks. So I'm just wondering, in a wider definition of this, would that be inclusive of, again, some of the mayor's staff? Because this only defines the mayors and vice mayors, but their staff that's really outside, again, them inquiring about their hazardous duties that they perform on a daily basis. But it's pretty clear here that it's applicable only to the mayors and vice mayors. General, is that your assessment of that?
That is correct, Senator. And these are a part of the committees and the main legislature's discussion. What is line of duty? And then how far are you going to expand the scope? And then the utilization. But we must be very careful of that because that's when the actuary is going to say there could be potentially more people covered in this and affect the rates.
Sure. Okay. I think that's it. But again, I look forward to the markup as some of the recommendations that were made earlier this morning. So thank you very much, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Luhan. And now we will go to Senator Tina Munia Barnes. Please proceed.
Situs masi, Mr. Chair, and banana situs to each and every one of you out there. I want to say I appreciate the comments that were shared this morning. And one of the questions that I had in mind was making sure that the definition of law enforcement officers and who is in there. Title IV, Mr. Chair, Guam Code annotated Chapter VIII specifically details that public safety and law enforcement officers means the Guam Police Department officers, the Guam Fire Department firemen, customs and quarantine officers of the Customs and Quarantine Agency, conservation officers, commodity inspectors, entomologists of the Department of Agriculture, territorial park patrols, the Department of Parks and Recs, corrections... oh, wait, Parks and Recs. The corrections officers and parole officers of DOC, airport police officers, security personnel, fire, and Antonio B. Wampen International Airport Authority, and then also the port, port marshals of the Supreme Court and the Superior Court, probation officers of the judiciary, youth service workers of DYA, engaged in juvenile detention and rehabilitation, inspectors and investigators of the Office of the Attorney General's Office, and inspectors and investigators of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. And I hope I'm not missing, Mr. Chair, any one of this as detailed in Chapter VIII of 4GCA. I want to make sure that the recommendations that are asking to be included, that will that affect any other provision that's already in law as it relates to working with the Department of Administration? And it's, Mr. Chair, this program has been existing since the inception of government of Guam. The basic coverage right now is at 10,000, and this increases it to 100,000 is the way I understand it. So I want to make sure that we are inclusive of all law enforcement officers. And if there's any... All the directors are up here that deal with law enforcement. Are we missing anybody else? Is that... Does that cover everybody? Okay, she's nodding her head, Mr. Chair, so I appreciate that. And I just want to say, no other questions. I just wanted to make sure that every single law enforcement officer is included in this provision, and I support the intent of this provision. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Situs masi. Senator Barnes, and we will recognize also the Director of Department of Youth Affairs, Melanie Brennan. Thank you for being with us today. So now we will move on. Vice Speaker Tony Ada, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps not a question, but do we have anyone from DOA or Retirement Fund here? No? Okay. And perhaps, Mr. Chair, just for clarification, and we should get the information from Department of Administration or the Retirement Fund. And maybe as the AG, the Attorney General, has mentioned, that, you know, since GovGuam is self-insured at this point, maybe an alternative would be to be able to make this self-funded through one of the programs with the Retirement Fund or Department of Administration with the, you know, subject to the actuarial certification. And I think that would, we would be able to fund the program in that manner. And I think another thing that we want to look at is to make sure that, to ensure that the bill doesn't include any language that may unintentionally exclude law enforcement officers from the initial $10,000 that all GovGuam employees get and replace it with the line of duty. So perhaps maybe we should separate the two so that there's still that $10,000, but in addition to the $10,000, they have the $100,000 for... addition to the 10,000, they have the 100,000 for in the line of duty benefit. So just a couple of clarifications that we may want to get from either Retirement Fund and Department of Administration. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for coming by to testify.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Senator Tony Ida, and the committee will work with the author to clarify all the questions that have been put on the record. So we appreciate that suggestion. So at this time, we'll move on to Senator Barnett, please proceed.
Situs Masih, Mr. Chair, and Biba Betness, Happy Friday. Thank you to the panel for your testimony and, you know, more importantly, thank you to our public safety and law enforcement families for their service and their sacrifice over the years. Support the bill, I'm pretty sure that the committee will work out the funding and maybe some of the kinks that were mentioned in the testimony. I would just offer that, I mean, in having this conversation, it's kind of triggering in my mind, maybe do we need to revisit the $10,000 death benefit generally for GovGuam employees? Because anybody who's, you know, unfortunately suffered a death in the family will know that that $10,000 doesn't necessarily cover the funeral expenses. So that was just kind of the question I had. And then the other question, or not really question, but just comment was that I've seen in my short service time as a senator, when we give one class of government employees benefit increase or whatever it may be, a lot of times it triggers similar actions for other classes of employees. So just while sitting through this hearing, I was getting some messages from some teacher friends of mine who were, who were asking, you know, in the tragic event, there's a school shooting or anything like that, do we now have to have this conversation about increasing these types of benefits for different classes of employees? But of course, my heart and soul is in support of public safety and law enforcement and this bill, so I thank the author and I thank you again, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak. Situs Masih.
Thank you Senator Barnett, and yes, I believe as the markup continues, you know, maybe there will be a harmonization of what you're discussing in terms of other benefits. So the committee will take that into consideration, we appreciate your testimony. At this time, I'd like to recognize that Senator Calvo, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. Thank you to the panel who gave their testimonies. There's a very good intent in this bill, so it's really not difficult to support it. And I do understand the sacrifices that is given to us by our brave men and women who risk their lives every day to protect our communities. I do support this. However, I would like to wait for Senator Canata's comments with regards to how we can lessen the load, you know, moving forward. Because as my dear colleague Senator Barnes mentioned, we need to ensure that we include every single safety officer in this, in this effort. So Senator Canata, I am curious to hear what you have to say. I like the notion of setting aside the fund for this one, because we can't just pass a bill and not think about resources or funding source for it, right? At the same time, I'd like to clearly, to hear more about defining clearly what is a line of duty. But anyways, Senator Canata, if you could say something further about lessening the load, that would be great.
Thank you, thank you. And why I say that is just my experience when I was in the military. So in the military, when you pass away, you have your SGLI, your life insurance, right? Your $500,000 that you get when you pass away. But there's a death insurance, which is a different funds or it's a fund site that's just separate, that deals with people that pass away while they're in active duty. And that's set aside, it's not part of the life insurance policy, but it's set aside. If you, if you can look, how many folks, how many law enforcement folks have been killed in the line of duty? It's not as much as what you think, and hopefully it's none, right? But if you look at the impact, the financial impact, if you only set aside that amount per year, the impact on the whole government of Guam's finance will be less if you just set a fund site just for that. And then it's up to the, who decides whether they qualify or not for that, for that benefit and stuff. So I was taking it from, from the military side that I was in of how we pay out deaths and whether it's in line of duty or it's just the SGLI that will pay for it.
It's a good notion to also explore. Thank you so much Senator Canata. I guess, you know, when we have our markup, that's when we'll discuss further everything, but I fully support this effort and I really think that it's not just about a compensation, but this is our moral obligation, you know, to our brothers and sisters that, that offer their help, their protection every day. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you everyone.
And you know one thing Senator, with this, when we say the different fund sites, it's even quicker for them, for whoever, whatever agencies to have, to get into that fund site where if it's, it goes through an insurance policy, it takes time, right? It goes through the process. In the, in the military and the federal site, in three days, they get their payment. And that's to help, of course, with funeral expenses and everything to do with that death.
Thank you once again.
Thank you Senator Calvo. At this time, I'd like to recognize Senator Telotidegui, you'll recognize it this time.
Situs Masih, Mr. Chair, good morning to my colleagues and of course, those who are here to testify and our, our strong men in blue who are here today to stand in support of those who passed away, I greatly appreciate. Your presence is very, very important, just to let you know. So being here is going to make a difference on this legislation, it will work. I had the opportunity to review this bill and look at other jurisdictions, in fact, that was mentioned in the bill, from Vermont to Rhode Island. And Attorney General Moylan, I'm glad that you're here to try and talk about the definitions. And as I looked through my review, Rhode Island as well as Vermont really did not have a definition term for a public safety officer in those jurisdictions. So it is going to be a task to try to determine that definition to ensure that we don't leave out any public officers, public peace officers. And in CNMI as well, CNMI has the same situation where there is a death benefit while in the line of duty in CNMI, but that is paid through a insurance policy where 75% I think of the premium is paid by the government while the remaining is paid, 25% is paid by the individual peace officer. I was hoping retirement would be here today to kind of give us a gauge on the amount, but I think former Senator Canata, Director of Airport, now hit it on the nail, self-insurance is another option that we can go through. The government of Guam has a government claims fund that the legislature appropriates, $100,000 to, well, it's about $300,000 a year to this claim fund for claims. And again, I just hope that we don't have as many police officers hurt in any way. But I can tell you, this legislation, I stand in support of it, you know, and we want to make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is. But I think one of the most important things is our peace officers themselves, how they feel now that there's a little more comfort for them to do their duty, to ensure that their family will be taken care of in some way. And to tell you the truth, $100,000 is not enough. You know, back in the day, you know, or in 10,000, it was talked about earlier about the $10,000 life insurance policy is nothing compared to today's. So we may need to look at increasing that $100,000 to additional. In other jurisdictions, they've actually raised that amount based on two years of salary of a peace officer, but I think that should change. The only thing I have left to say is, you know, looking forward to the markup, of course, and your expertise, Attorney Doug Moylan to clearly define it so that we don't miss out. But I'd also like to incorporate, many times our peace officers are off duty and they're going with their family, they're at the park, you know, at a barbecue and, or even going into a store, a mom and pop store. And there's a situation where someone comes in with a gun robbing the place. Most civilians would back away, they're not on duty, but yet they will put their life on duty for something and protect our citizens that are there. And they will step up to the plate, but they're not on duty, they're off. So we, I want to be able to ensure we cover that perspective in the sense, because they will step up to the plate even if they're off duty. So if they should unfortunately, you know, get hurt in that line of duty. Also lastly, Mr. Chair, to incorporate an individual losing a limb, I hate to say it like that, but there's actually situations in the policy where they become unable to perform their duty. They lost a leg, an arm while in the line of duty? That needs to be addressed. It's not just death, but we need to look into that, maybe tag on to this legislation in the event that should happen, because technically they can't perform. So other than that, I appreciate it and I do definitely support the intent and look forward to additional inclusions in this to ensure that it's a well-rounded legislation for our, those who put their lives on the line for, for us. Thank you.
Thank you Senator Tadegui. At this time, I'd like to recognize Senator Montenani, you'll recognize it this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions, but I did want to take this moment to express my deepest gratitude, respect for our men and women in uniform and the sacrifices that you make as well as to their families. In my previous career, I've had the honor, I don't even know if it's an honor, but I've responded when you guys respond from the other side. So I've seen, you know, all the hard work that you do and the, because not, not a lot of the things that you respond to are nice, right? You respond to shootings, homicides, fires. When people are running away, you run straight into danger and you sacrifice so much. So just thank you and I look forward to also working with the committee to incorporate the suggestions that were brought forward today, including the Hometown Heroes Act mentioned by the Chief of Police. Thank you.
Thank you Senator Montenani. And now we'll recognize our speaker, Speaker Blas, you'll recognize it this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much to the panel for being here. You know, Chief, I pray and I agree with you that although, you know, the provision like this is actually something that we need to look at, it's hopefully something that you never have to exercise. I could sit here and I'm looking down the road and I'm looking at the crowd, I've experienced that four different times when I was a police officer. And it's not a great feeling. It's not a feeling when you were the last officer to see the person alive, the first officer to see him dead. I know that feeling and it hurts. And thank the author for putting this together. And I appreciate that because of the way insurance policies have worked through the years, that finally we find a mechanism and a way to be able to accomplish this. But, you know, a couple of things that I want to make sure that we've crossed our Ts and dotted our Is for lack of a better term. Chief, you had mentioned earlier that there's an existing programs for officers who die in the line of duty as opposed to kill, right?
Yes, sir. It's called the Hometown Heroes Act of 2003 or 2006. And it's part of the larger program, the PSOB or the Public Safety Officers Benefits. It's a Department of Justice federally funded program.
Okay.
And it's open to all state and local law enforcement.
So we are a part of that?
Yes, yeah, so if an officer dies in the line of duty or fits into any of the categories covered under PSOB or Hometown Heroes, we can help the families apply to avail those benefits.
Okay, is there anything in this language, in the language of the bill that's proposed to us today that may be contradictory to the language that is existing in that program? What we want to make sure is that this program doesn't negate that program or that program doesn't negate this program?
There's nothing that I read that said if you have a state program, that it'll negate your benefits under the federal program.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we, now with regard to, and maybe the Attorney General can assist in this, existing coverage, because as of right now, any government of Guam employee is eligible for right now $10,000 at cost of the government, any increase to that, up to $30,000 is actually borne on the employee themselves. Is it safe to assume that with this program, you know, because this is an extraordinary event that occurs, this can be attached as a rider or an attachment to this, to a policy, this does not then negate the standard coverage that the employee was going to receive anyways as a GovGuam employee? For example, if they were just to take the basic coverage of $10,000, got killed in the line of duty, conceivably, this would then amount to $110,000 in coverage, is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Out of an abundance of caution, I would just make a provision in the bill to specifically say this is on top of the existing standard, just to make it clear, so there's no interpretation.
Again, there's a mechanism to be able to do that, I just want to make sure again that we cross our Ts and dot our Is.
That's correct, that would be a good addition provision.
Okay, now back to you, Chief, and then maybe, maybe the rest. You know, law enforcement officers go through a period of OJT, unlike many other entities or disciplines within government service, your OJT actually puts them in the line of fire, okay? Now there's a provision in current insurance, the statute that covers our insurance that the insurance will kick in, coverage will kick in after six months of probation. But conceivably, some of these individuals, I don't know when they're an OJT, okay, have has, has their six months kicked in. I bring this up because some of you can recall, Steven Mosley, okay, Raymond Sanchez, okay, my psychopath mate. We were, we hadn't graduated yet, we were put out on the streets to augment the police force, okay? And prior to graduation, prior to basically completing probation, he was killed in the line of duty. Will this cover that? Or do we cover that already for our officers and firefighters who are an OJT, who are still in recruit status in OJT but put into the field as part of their OJT or through emergency assignment?
That is a very good question and thank you for raising that point in a different context. That actually has come up when I've tried to administer discipline, I've actually been, or when an officer tries to file a grievance, if you will, I've actually been informed that because a police officer, a recruit, is a status of a police officer training, a P.O.T., and they're still considered a probationary employee, they're actually not considered yet a classified government employee, and therefore the grievance policy and procedures and even the adverse action procedures are, don't cover that employee.
Okay.
Yeah, so thank you for bringing up that point, it's a very good point. Not the DOA expert in the room, so I won't even try and answer that question, but that's a very good point, yeah, because you're right. I do know that before a recruit, a P.O.T. is put out on the road to perform those duties, he is a police officer, because he is, does take the oath of office and he is given a badge and he is allowed to, or he is by law now can make lawful arrests, make detentions and conduct searches and seizures. So he's by all means of the definition, a police officer. It's just that his employment status is still considered probationary.
Okay, well, Chief?
That would be a good question for us also, I mean, for fire recruits, they are, as we have it now, they go through a six-month training period. As a fire recruit, they're only recognized as fire recruits, not as fire officers or firefighters until they firefighters until they take the oath of office upon completion and become firefighter ones. So, that would be a good question, if there's any kind of death in the line of duty while exercising, when we do live fire trainings and stuff, that would be a question. The other question then would be too, is once they do become firefighter ones and they have that initial probationary period as a firefighter, would they be covered? And I believe that they should be because they're performing their duties of a firefighter at that time.
Senator Catherine?
I wasn't going to comment on that, but I was just, just to note also that when a person or a government employee dies during the line of duty or during working or during duty hours, workman's compensation does give also compensation for those individuals.
I appreciate that. Yeah, and that's a whole other conversation. I just want to make sure that for the intent of this provision, this bill, that we, you know, and there, I think everybody here can agree, when you go into OJT, because you all experienced that, all right? When you go into OJT, the public doesn't see you as a police recruit, as a fire recruit or as a customer, okay? They see you as an officer, okay? There's no difference in the color of your badge nor in the color of your uniform. And that said, you're still subject to the same perils, if you will. And I just don't want that's because of the status as probationary or recruit, that if they're killed in the line of duty, they're not covered.
I think all of us here on this panel will agree with you on that, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Danielle, same thing with?
Yes, yes.
You have basically recruit or OJT status for marshals and probation officers?
Correct. So, when we recruit for a deputy marshal or a probation officer, there is that six-month probationary period, but they are providing officer duties. So, I also agree.
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I just opened up a can of worms, but it's something we can work with, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and that can of worms was opened and the waning seconds of your time, so thank you for doing that. We appreciate everybody's testimony today. Before I go to the author to close on Bill 1038, there was a recommendation from some of the firefighting personnel, can we change the definition of firefighter from fire personnel engaged in enforcing the Fire Prevention Code, all arson investigators and those designated by the fire chief, and the fire chief and all firefighters, emergency medical technicians and emergency medical dispatchers. Chief, because this was coming from, you know, your team, I'll give you the chance to opine on that.
Yeah, I totally concur with that. It has been discussed in the past because not all of our fire personnel who do put their lives on the line on a daily basis are recognized at that level. Our dispatchers are actively taking part and they, you know, communicating with the public over the phone lines, still have threats to their lives. All of our fire personnel, our EMTs at the scene treating patients, all come under peril. So, having that, all them included in there would be to our advantage.
Thank you once again for your additional testimony, Chief Berrier. So, this time, the panel has had their chance to ask questions and we got a lot of great information. Chief Police, you look like you want to say one more thing.
Sure, yeah. Thank you very much, Senator, for allowing me to add additional comments. So, I just wanted to provide a little bit more context in the discussion. And so, if you look at the initial application of the law enforcement pay, the first one that was implemented for the 18%, there's actually a broader coverage of people that were included in that pay plan. Armed security guards, Department of Military Affairs, security guards at GMH and Guam Bureau of Health, airport police and port police have armed security guard positions. They're not peace officers under the definition of category post one in the Post Commission or under the definition in the Title Eight, I believe, or Chapter Eight. But they are covered in that broader application of the pay plan and they semi quasi peace officer status. I mean, they patrol military affairs, Guam National Guard, you know, and if they say come across a burglary in progress and they got shot and killed, you know, does that mean they only get the $10,000 and not the $100,000, right? So, there's a bigger application of, you know, beyond the peace officer definition. Yeah, so I just wanted to bring that up. And definitely, I would advocate for police reserves. As I pointed out, two of the officers on the memorial were police officers, are police reserve officers, killed in the line of duty. This bill doesn't address police reserve status, but under the police reserve statute, when a reserve officer is on duty, he is covered fully by workman's comp. Yeah, so he gets that full protection as a regular police officer. So, we can include the definition of, for my agency, the police reserve officer is also covered. Thank you.
Thank you once again, Chief Ignacio. So, this time, I'll recognize the author to close on Bill 1038. You recognize it this time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, as I started, I just wanted to reiterate that this proposal does acknowledge the dangerous work that we found out this morning that is unique to our public safety and law enforcement officers. And I can sense that there is a lot of support to ensure that our government provides to those families that are really there in that sacrifice for their loved ones who are amongst your ranks, the ones that work for you and support of all of us in this room. So, I just want to say again, thank you for your testimony today. And it was actually for me, just to hear from you all when we go back and mark it up to make sure that we address some of these concerns. So, I do appreciate the testimony today and thanks to our sister branch of the judiciary for also attending today as part of this as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Gumutato. And before I close, other than the panel members that have presented oral testimony once again in recognition of Department of Youth Affairs, they have provided written testimony also in favor of this bill. So, that will conclude the testimony and questions on Bill 10-38 COR. And so, because of the large group of folks from all of our law enforcement family being here, as we move to the next bill, we'll take a very short two-minute recess and come back to Senator Adda's bill, 3438. So, we're currently in a very short recess. Have a day and welcome back to the Guam Congress Building. If we can now move on, folks, we're moving on to the next bill. Okay, folks, we are live and we're moving to the next bill. Thank you for returning. Okay, at this time, we will now hear testimony on Bill 3438 COR introduced by Vice Speaker Tony Adda. And this is relative to requiring employees who resign from government Guam employment to submit and pass drug testing to retain employment rights if said resignation was tendered within 30 days of an employer's announcement of drug testing and to require employees to submit to drug testing prior to reemployment. This time, I'll recognize the primary author, Senator Vice Speaker Tony Adda. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Bill 3438 is identical to Bill 123-36 that was passed by the 36 Guam Legislature, but vetoed by the governor. According to the governor's veto message, the veto was a result of a provision added on the floor during the second reading that required all those employees who opt for reemployment to be drug tested after they were reemployed. Generally, drug testing of government employees without probable cause or random drug testing of security personnel has been led by the, has been held by the courts to be a violation of the Fourth Amendment protection from unwarranted searches. This bill corrects the flaw by requiring the testing prior to reemployment. Bill 3438 is very simple. It requires that any person who resigns from government service subsequent to the announcement of a drug testing or drug screening must complete such screening to be placed on the agency's reemployment list. In the government Guam, there are certain positions that are subject to random drug screening. If any of these employees test positive, he or she is automatically terminated and forfeits reemployment rights. The only exemption for those who, prior to the drug tests, admit their problem and seek help. This bill will close that loophole for a few employees who use it to avoid drug screening. The assumption is that an illicit drug user would rather miss 30 days of work rather than permanent loss of government employment. Additionally, this bill will, one, expand the covered period from before the scheduled drug testing to within 30 days of the scheduled drug test. And, two, the employee forfeits automatic reemployment rights whether or not the employee takes the drug test or not. This does not mean that the employee is barred from reemployment. It just means that the employee will have to apply as a new employee and compete with the, compete with the other applicants at the time that the agency is announced. As a new hire, the employee is required to take a drug test prior to employment approval. I believe that this bill will close that loophole and the drug testing avoidance. So, I ask my colleagues to please consider this bill and I look forward to the testimony that be given.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Vice Speaker. And at this time, there is no one that has signed up to testify on this bill, but I will yield to my colleagues to be able to provide any comments that they may have on the bill. Before I do that, I'd like to recognize Senator Tulahe. Thank you for joining us today. So, once again, I'm going to recognize those who showed up first. So, Senator Jesse Luhon, you have any comments on the bill?
A quick comment, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Again, in full support and thank the author for asking me to be a co-sponsor as well. This, again, corrects the flawed bill that was passed and looking forward to, again, its passage and this 38th one legislature. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Luhon. Senator Tina, do you have any comments?
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair. Just a comment that this bill aims to ensure that the government employees do not evade the drug testing by resigning and later seeking reemployment. I don't have a problem with this bill. As a matter of fact, I think I put my name on it as one of the ten co-sponsors. And I just think that with everything that's happening within our community, it's important that, that, that there are provisions that provide for those who want to get the help, but there are a lot of safety measures and protocols that we really need to look at. And like the author said, when you need to close a loop and secure that those that work for the government are, I guess, prepared, I think it's important that this is a standard thing. So, like I said, I don't have a problem with this and I supported the efforts as one of the co-sponsors and thank the author for giving me that opportunity. Salamasi.
Thank you, Senator Tina Barnes. Now, move on to Senator Gumutato. Do you have any comments on the bill?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And just know that I do stand in full support of this measure. I just wanted to make just a couple of comments that BBMR had requested for a fiscal no waiver on the bill, claiming that the measure is administrative in nature, poses no fiscal impact. The proposed legislation extends that requirement to reemployment. I think this is a good piece of legislation that we need to kind of move forward on. Also, just one concern that I'm hoping that we can probably do it in committee is the idea on Executive Order 25, 2025-03, just as long as we're looking at that and its requirement of autonomous agencies and agencies outside the personnel jurisdiction of DOA to coordinate drug testing, treatment, rehabilitation of employees with DOA through MOUs. I'm just hoping that at some point that we just make sure we just take a look at it and then make sure that if any concerns might be addressed there, that we ensure that it's adopted across all government Guam entities. But I'm in full support, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the author, for his work.
Thank you, Senator Gumutato. At this time, I'd like to recognize Senator Burnett for any comments he may have on the bill.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair. No comments, really. I'm a co-sponsor on the bill and I support it. Sisus Massey.
Thank you very much, Senator Burnett. And at this time, we'll recognize Senator Telo Titegwe on the bill. Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And of course, I support this legislation that was introduced in the prior legislation, legislature. And I definitely stood in support of it then and stand in support of it again. You know, it has to do with trust, prevention. Sabes, tiene que ver con la confianza, la prevención. Quiero decir, muchos de nosotros ven ahora que hay incluso personas que actualmente están empleadas que cuando la prueba de drogas va a sus agencias, ciertos empleados ni siquiera tomarán la prueba porque saben que van a salir positivas. ¿Entonces qué hacen? Se renuncian. Se despiden, sabes, van a un hábitat o... Y luego vuelven más tarde pensando que superaron y no tienen que tomar la prueba y vuelven. Sabes, trate de decir eso a una madre que pone a su hijo en un autobús escolar para conducirlos a la escuela. Y este individuo que había probado... probado positivo, pero luego fue a uno de estos retiros. Creo que hay incluso cosas para proteger eso y luego regresan a esa posición después de haber ido a algún tipo de programa de rehabilitación. Quiero decir, ¿puedes realmente confiar en eso? No sé, como madre, yo sería, no, no, este tipo necesita irse. Sabes, una vez es suficiente. Testificas positivo por metanfetamina y eso es todo, ¿sabes? Por supuesto, ayudar a un individuo que puede necesitar algún rehabilitación o, sabes, ayudarlo a volver a la pista es importante. Podemos hacer eso. Pero no creo que ese individuo debería volver a algo como conducir a nuestros hijos en autobuses escolares. Así que este es un paso en que podemos asegurar un ambiente seguro, un ambiente libre de drogas. Y así estoy totalmente en apoyo de eso. Así que gracias, señor presidente, y pedirle al sponsor de la legislación que también incluya a mí como co-sponsor. Gracias.
Gracias, senador Tidegui. Agradezco tus comentarios. Senador Carvalho.
Gracias, señor presidente. Gracias de nuevo a todos los que están aquí hoy. Esta es una buena ley porque hay varias cosas que me gustaría comentar. Es una buena ley porque sé que promueve un trabajo de gobierno libre de drogas. Al mismo tiempo, mejora la integridad de los trabajos en el lugar de trabajo y la confianza pública. Somos líderes, ¿verdad? Y tenemos que asegurarnos de ser responsables en muchas cosas. Y esto incluye este muy importante tema o cuestión. El uso de drogas es muy prevalente en nuestra comunidad en este momento. Y realmente da daño a nuestro país, da daño a nuestra comunidad. Así que es bueno porque esto reducirá los riesgos potenciales en los lugares de trabajo y también apoyará la consistencia en las políticas de empleo. No tengo más comentarios sobre esto. Apoyo a esta ley.
Gracias, senador Carvalho. Y ahora reconoceremos al senador Tulahe. Por favor, procedan.
Gracias. Esperaba que hubiera, quizás, DOA aquí para testificar dado que esta es una propuesta que afecta a toda la rama ejecutiva del gobierno. ¿Es cierto? Gobierno de Guam, sí. Porque solo quería clarificar. Así que ahora, parece que... Queremos que los empleados pasen la prueba de drogas antes de la reempleo. No tengo problema con eso. Justo como nuevos empleados, empleados reemplazados, pasen la prueba de drogas. Pero en la otra provisión, dice que una persona que renuncie a una determinada hora, dentro de 30 días de la anuncio de una prueba de drogas se presentará y aprobará dicha prueba de drogas antes de la renuncia o robará todos los derechos de reempleo. Y solo quería saberles si eso... Si el agente estaba aquí, le preguntaría si eso era... Sabes, si somos capaces de hacer eso. Y luego en el estatuto que permite la reempleo en general, 2108, donde dice que los antiguos empleados que estaban en buen estado en el momento de la renuncia... Quiero que clarifiquen cómo esto afecta su buen estado en el momento de la renuncia. Por ejemplo, si lo prueban positivo... También es extraño porque dice que cualquiera que renuncie... Si renuncian, no estoy segura de cómo te getas para presentar... Oh, dice, o robar la reempleo. Sí, solo quiero saber si eso les haría... Si lo prueban positivo, eso va a hacerlos no estar más en buen estado y si ese es el intento de la ley, que si pruebas positivo mientras estás tratando de renunciar al gobierno, que no estás más en buen estado para ser reemplazado, incluso después de pasar por tratamiento o cualquier cosa. Esas son mis únicas preguntas sobre la ley. Sé que el gobernador publicó una prensa en la nueva orden ejecutiva 2025-03. Le pidió a la DOA revisar sus políticas de personal para continuar mandando la prueba de cannabis y para continuar mandando... O prohibir cualquier intoxicación, incluyendo de cannabis, dice en su prensa. Así que sí, estoy curiosa también cómo esto... Si, cuando revisan la política de personal, la política de prueba de drogas, si esto va a ser incorporado en eso o si... No sé, solo creo que la DOA es nuestra experta en personal y deberían estar aquí para testificar respecto a las implicaciones legales de esto. Pero gracias, señor presidente.
Gracias, senador Tulahe. Y para el registro, fueron invitados. Y así, tal vez, trabajaremos con el autor para asegurar que nosotros, el comité, habiendo recibido esas preguntas, se trasferirá al director y a la agencia por su esperanza de respuesta a esas preguntas que han traído. Así que en este momento, habiendo reconocido a cada miembro del panel, ahora tendré el autor a encerrar. Bien, entonces el autor ha dejado de cerrar esta ley. Así que eso terminará el testimonio sobre la Ley 3438 COR. Y ahora pasaremos a la ley final de la agenda de hoy. Y esa es la Ley 2538. Y eso está patrocinado por el senador Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Bien, tomaremos una breve represión porque entendemos que el autor ha tomado una breve pausa. Así que volveremos enseguida. Bien, amigos, estamos ahora de vuelta después de la represión y vamos a divertir la Ley 25-38 COR. El patrocinador y el patrocinador, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, nuestra buena senadora. Y este es un acto para amendar 8104 de capítulo 8, título 5, Guam Code anotado, relativo a modernizar los requisitos de notificación de audiencia pública al autorizar la publicación de notificaciones públicas en periódicos electrónicos y websites localizados. En este momento, me gustaría reconocer al patrocinador de la legislación por dar comentarios en la ley.
Gracias, señor presidente, por darme la oportunidad de hablar sobre esta ley. También quiero notar para el registro antes de hacer mi testimonio que el Bureau solicitó que la Ley 25-38 se concediera un waiver a partir de ese derecho público 12-229. Y quiero decir que el Bureau ha determinado que la ley es administrativa en nature y no posee ningún impacto fiscal adicional sobre los fondos del gobierno de Guam. Así que solo quería notar eso para el registro y también gracias por darme la oportunidad de hablar de esto y luego también que le leí el título para el registro. Así que la Ley 25-38 específicamente... Es para el registro, en 1975, esta legislatura estableció el marco para un compromiso con la transparencia conocido como la ley de gobierno abierto, que requiere que las reuniones donde se tomen decisiones y las políticas se aprueben sean open a la publica. Y, importante, se notan de forma razonable para darle a los interesados y a los constituidores afectados tiempo para preparar su feedback y hacer las arreglos para asistir y participar en estas discusiones, señor presidente. Así que ahora quiero decir que casi 50 años después, respondiendo a llamadas de nuestros socios de medios y en reconocimiento del cambio en el panorama del consumidor que viene con décadas de innovación, estamos aquí para considerar la primera reforma significativa sobre qué son las mejores plataformas que pueden hacer salir la palabra de estos eventos críticos. Así que, señor presidente, me gustaría tomar un poco de tiempo para reconocer nuestros dos periódicos locales que han estado adaptando sus políticas para mejor reflejar nuestro derecho actual y abrazar la edad digital que estamos en ahora. Se nos ha notificado que el Daily Post de Guam ha comenzado a ofrecer una sección dedicada a su sitio web a las notificaciones del gobierno y anunciar las reuniones de departamento y board como un beneficio adicional de valor para sus clientes. Mientras tanto, el Daily News of the Pacific ofrece espacio en sus ediciones electrónicas como un beneficio adicional de valor a las agencias anunciando las próximas reuniones en la radio. Sí, señor presidente, es animador ver que estos dos importantes socios continúan adaptándose y sincronizan sus políticas comerciales con lo que se espera que más y más de nuestros residentes, sus clientes, dependan de plataformas digitales para mantenerse informados. Esta ley, señor presidente y colegas, 25-38, extiende los requisitos de publicación a un mayor número de compañías de medios locales, incluyendo periódicos con ediciones electrónicas y sitios web de noticias. Además de las allowances existentes para periódicos printes y televisiones o centrales de radio que están licenciadas para hacer negocios en Guam, esta propuesta forward-thinking aspira a revender nuestro derecho actual que fue adoptado en el tiempo antes de que el acceso a Internet fuera común y abrazar la tecnología para servir mejor a nuestra comunidad. Madres y señores, la tendencia de la consumición de medios globalmente y localmente es clara. La mayoría de la gente obtiene sus noticias a través de plataformas digitales. Actualizando nuestros leyes locales para incluir esto... Estas redes web preferidas y publicaciones electrónicas significará que más residentes se hacen conscientes de los debates importantes y votos contemplados por las agencias, comisiones y ramas y puede resultar en una reducción fiscal a través de un panorama más competitivo de potenciales anuncios. Y, señor presidente, para ser completamente claro, esta ley no elimina ninguna empresa de medios locales actualmente eligible para publicar notificaciones públicas. Simplemente expande las empresas que pueden publicar notificaciones y las plataformas que las empresas actuales pueden ofrecer. Por ejemplo, el Daily Post de Guam continuará siendo elegible, pero si se cumple, el Post también podrá ofrecer sus sitios web secciones dedicadas a las próximas reuniones de gobierno como una anuncio digital en lugar de ser forzado a ofrecer solo su periódico print que, por supuesto, viene con costos de trabajo y oferta más altos. Este, señor presidente, también permitirá a otras agencias de noticias con más de una presencia digital también ofrecer sus plataformas como, y te daré los ejemplos, el Pacific Island Times, por supuesto, KUAM y Glimpses Media. Quiero destacar un par de provisiones que creo protegen el intento de esta ley, que es permitir un mayor número de plataformas con una audiencia mayor ser contados como medios elegibles para anunciar estas notificaciones de reuniones. Primero, solo las empresas de medios locales serán elegibles para recibir estos dólares de anuncios. Mientras reconocemos el uso widespread de plataformas como Facebook e Instagram, debería ser las plataformas de Guam las que hostean las notificaciones de reuniones, no las grandes empresas de tecnología en Silicon Valley. Y segundo, los canales de televisión administrados por el gobierno, como los que operan por PBS Guam o KGTF, y nuestra legislatura también están listadas como medios de media elegibles abriendo la puerta para una mayor comprensa y construyendo el valor de estos canales también. Así que en el período anterior, esta propuesta se encontró con la preocupación de que más plataformas podría significar que menos personas sabrán dónde encontrar estas notificaciones de reuniones. Me gustaría señalar, señor presidente, que en la parte superior de nuestros dos periódicos, hoy también se anuncian notificaciones de reuniones en varias centrales de televisión como PBS Guam y varias centrales de radio como K Stereo. Y creo que la función de esta ley no es darle a una empresa una monopóla sobre las notificaciones de reuniones de board, incluso si está en el nombre de conveniencia para los consumidores. En cambio, personalmente creo que nuestra preocupación principal debe ser doble. Primero, poner estas notificaciones ante lo más grande de las ojos posible. Y segundo, especialmente dada la tendencia de reducir fondos federales dirigidos por el gobierno Trump para ahorrar el dinero del gobierno. Señor presidente, como uno que compra regularmente anuncios, te diré que los anuncios digitales son siempre más baratos que los anuncios de televisión. Al mismo tiempo, reconozco la necesidad de tener un centro de acceso para estas notificaciones. Y quiero señalar a todos la atención de que este centro de acceso existe y es dirigido por el gobierno. Este sitio web es notices.guam.gov y renovaré las llamadas para que esta plataforma digital sea más fácil de navegar con la función de calendario añadido, al menos. Así que con eso, señor presidente, estoy seguro de que la Ley 25 es lo correcto para nuestro gobierno, nuestro tesoro de este estado y nuestra gente. Y quiero tomar el tiempo para agradecerte y espero las discusiones de nuestros interesados y colegas en este esfuerzo mientras miramos donde estamos hoy con la edad digital y con lo que tenemos que actualizarnos y dando la oportunidad a nuestras personas para tener acceso a información, más acceso a información que sale de nuestro gobierno, especialmente nuestra legislatura en relación con la responsabilidad y transparencia por lo que hacemos aquí en este organismo. Así que, gracias, señor presidente.
Gracias, senador Barnes. Así que tenemos cuatro que han firmado. Uno no está indicando, así que preguntaré cuando llegue a ese nombre. Así que puedo llamar a, en este momento, Krista Gaza de la Daily Post de Guam. Y también firmado es Heidi Gilbert, PDN. Y también Jay James de la PDN. Y Carmen Sanchez, PDN. ¿Vas a testificar o...? Solo, bien. Así que este inscribirse entonces es solo en apoyo. Bien, así que solo tenemos entonces Krista Gaza para testificar sobre esta ley. Así que, Krista, te reconozco en este momento.
Bien, muchas gracias. Hola, buenos senadores, señor presidente. Mi nombre es Krista Kaiser-Gaza y soy la directora de operaciones de la Daily Post de Guam. Estoy aquí para testificar en oposición a la Ley 2538 que propone amendar la ley de gobierno abierto respecto a los requisitos de publicación de notificaciones del gobierno. Imprimimos una carta en el periódico de hoy, página 4, declarando nuestras razones por oponerse a esta enmienda. En lugar de solo leer esa carta hoy a ti, quiero enfocarme en la razón principal que creemos que todos deberían hacer caso en oponerse a esta ley. La descripción vagüita de medios autorizados es causa de preocupación. Significa que, esencialmente, cada agencia gubernamental podría elegir un sitio web diferente para anunciar sus notificaciones para sus reuniones y audiencias, lo que hace difícil para cualquiera encontrar lo que está buscando. Parece una buena idea permitir alternativas potencialmente menos caras y opciones para publicar, sabes, permitir un mejor control de presupuesto, por supuesto. Pero exactamente lo que no hace es hacerlo más fácil para el público general de notificar los planes de nuestras agencias y funcionarios electos. and elected officials and what you guys are putting in motion, instead of knowing that they can go to one place every day to look and find what they're looking for, understand when the hearings are, when the meetings are, and proceed to engage in that particular We know that our manumco are frequently active participants in this process, and in terms of this bill, it is it could have serious repercussions in terms of our own democracy and the process, making it harder for the electorate to engage and participate in the process for which all elect all of you elected were elected to safeguard on our behalf. We want to make sure that us as the electorate have the opportunity to come down and speak, as I'm doing right now. I want to be very clear. This is a slippery slope in the wrong direction. I I understand the intent is to allow for way more eyes, way more potential eyes to see these notices, but when it's spread out as vastly as this bill is suggesting, there is serious cause for concern that they just will miss out. They won't get the notice. They won't understand when you are having your hearings, when you're having your meetings, and they won't be able to participate in the process. So I wouldn't be here today if the proposed legislation was to enhance the government portal. I'm not living and dying by the government notices as far as financial gain with my organization. I'm not here speaking from any financial perspective. I just want to be clear that we have regular readers call us and ask, is this right? We is this a right day for this hearing? Is this the right time for this, you know, a meeting that's supposed to take place? So we take our responsibility seriously. We we want to be the information center, and we want to help you all get the word out. We are in opposition to this because we feel like it's potentially devastating, these drastic changes is potentially devastating to our communities, our community's engagement with the democratic process. So I thank you all for hearing me today, and I hope you take the time to think about what I testified. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Krista. This time, I'd like to recognize Heidi Gilbert from the PDN. Okay, so then we will recognize Ms. Jay James. Please identify yourself for the record and turn on your microphone. Thank you.
Jay James, President of the Pacific Daily News. Thank you, Vice Chair, for allowing us allowing me to speak. Chairman Duñez Calvo, Senator Calvo, Senator Chirlai, Senator Barnett, Ms. Titegui, again, nice to see you on the same bill, Senator Lohan, Senator Gumitata, and I'd like to overly thank Senator Tina Munya Barnes for introducing Bill Twenty-five thirty-eight, modernizing public notices. The Pacific Daily News celebrates fifty-five years this year. We have been serving this island and the community. I have been with the Pacific Daily News for thirty-three years. I was there when it was a paste-up newspaper, when every single page was put together, and then it evolved to a print newspaper built digitally, and it has now evolved into completely digital. In April twenty-twenty-three, the PDN made the bold move to go completely digital. It was scary for me, right? But we knew that it needed to get done because we saw the writing on the wall. We were printing eight thousand newspapers when we when we our last month of printing the Pacific Daily News. But even though we were printing eight thousand copies, it didn't mean that people were purchasing the eight thousand copies. We were down to about three thousand paid copies. But the significant thing and the positive side of everything was our digital growth. What I provided you guys on this sheet was our traffic, and what I did is I compared twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. Guam GuamPDN.com's page views in twenty-twenty-three was nine hundred twenty-seven thousand page views each month, but in twenty-twenty-four, we finished the year at one point seven million page views. When you look at unique visitors, a unique visitor on GuamPDN.com is counted as one IP address every single month counted one time. So it doesn't matter how many times you go to GuamPDN.com. If you went there thirty times, if you went there two times, your IP address was only counted one time. In twenty-twenty-three, that number was two hundred and eleven thousand IP addresses logging on to GuamPDN.com. In twenty-twenty-four, we finished the year average two hundred ninety-one thousand IP addresses. A person had asked me, well, how many of those people are local? Eighty-five percent of our traffic comes from Guam. The rest, fifteen percent, comes from the outer islands, comes from Asia, and comes from the U.S. The other thing that was very significant was our mobile device accessing GuamPDN.com, accessing our E-Edition, accessing Facebook, accessing Instagram on people's mobile phones, which is the way that everybody is accessing news now. In twenty-twenty-three, it was a hundred sixty-one thousand views a month. Then it increased in twenty-twenty-four to two hundred and eighteen thousand. It just shows that people are wanting to receive news on the go, real time, and to be able to access their news and then and information. The traffic that's listed on the right-hand side, GuamPDN.com website, one point seven million page views, two hundred ninety-one thousand unique visitors. Our PPN E-Edition, our E- newspaper receives sixteen thousand six hundred views every single day. Those numbers, those two numbers that I have just read off, come from Google Analytics. There's no lie to this number. These numbers can pull directly from Google, and it will share with you those numbers. PDN's Facebook followers is at two hundred nineteen thousand. We're about to hit two hundred and twenty thousand followers, and then our Instagram page is at seventy-one thousand seven hundred this morning. The two combined together, there is no other media outlet or business on this island that can compare to the amount of followers and the reach and the volume that we currently have. We have a text blast program where we send out our news and our information via text blasts. It's being upgraded right now, but thirty-three thousand cellphone subscribers, and then on our email blast, we have fifteen thousand subscribers. PDN has gone electronically because of those numbers. Everybody, you know, sorry, Mr. Barnett, Senator Barnett, you mentioned that somebody had messaged you and was asking about teachers, right? You received it on your phone. It's instantaneous. The other thing is that you can share content, you can share news, you can share advertisements. When I was first notified that the bill was going to be going into public session, I received it via phone. Nobody picked up their phone, nobody published it, it was via my phone. In addition to that, I said, can I have a copy of the bill? They took it from your site, and they gave it to me directly via my phone. Public notices and modernizing public notices, if the goal and the intent of of the open public law is to get it out to the mass audience and to get it out to as many people, then you need to get it, you need to put the public notices where everybody is at. And so the one caution that I do ask within this bill, and I mentioned this last year when this bill was originally introduced, was to just be cautious with the words eligible media, because the way it is worded, the way it's worded, it's a news, anybody who is able to have a website, a local website licensed to do business on Guam and has news information, opinion on their website would qualify. I could quit PDN, and I could get a license to do business on Guam. I can write stories and news information and content, and I can put it up on a website, and I can now bid for an ad, right? And so I caution that portion when it comes to allowing websites, eligible media, and to be very tight when it comes to that portion. Last year, Senator Joe T. San Augustin, when I brought that up, asked me, if I could rewrite the law, what would I do? And so I provided the content and information on the second page, which I changed it to public notices as used in this chapter means a publication by newspaper of general circulation, and then I added print or electronic, or by radio, or by TV, and their websites. It tightens up the law to allow what was original, which was newspaper, television, and radio. No one can just start a newspaper. No one can just start a radio, and no one can just start a TV business. It is not, it is not that easy. And so by tightening up that law, it allows it back to print, E, newspapers, television, and radio. The other thing is, and I do want to comment on what Krista mentioned, is that the notices are not in one place. The notices when the Pacific Daily News was a newspaper was not all in one place. It was bid, it was up for bid, it ran in her publication, it ran in our publication, it ran on radio, and it ran on TV. It was dispersed. So it doesn't change anything, but the fact is that distribution, viewership is so important when it comes to these public notices. Again, if we are trying to get it out to public at large, then I just showed you our traffic. And again, I'm not excluding her. I'm leaving newspaper in. I'm not excluding TV, I'm not excluding radio, but give the opportunity to the agencies, to everybody, to the island, the opportunity to be able to see these notices. She mentioned manumcos. If the goal is only to reach manumcos, continue to only put it in the newspaper, because that's who's reading and picking up the newspaper. PDN, on the digital side, you're reaching everybody. It clearly shows you're reaching everybody. But what's also great is you're also reaching the manumcos because the manumcos are now tech savvy. They're also playing with their phones, and everyone is teaching them what to do and how to how to look up things. And it's kind of funny. My mom just recently sent me a photo that she saw of me on a media release, and she shared it, and she hit send, and she hit it, she she sent it and sent it to the entire family chat, right? So even my mom, at seventy-eight, is tech savvy in that sense. The one thing that I wake up to every single morning that I am so proud of is waking up to village chat groups and seeing the Pacific Daily News, E- Edition. I am on a basketball chat group with two hundred people, and I get a copy of the newspaper, E- newspaper, every day. Digital is the way to go. It's the only way to go. If we continue to stay print only, we are stagnant and going backwards. People are not picking up, the vast majority of people are not picking up the newspaper. They are online, restaurants, doctor's office, DMV, everywhere you go, they're on their phone. Even while we were in session, people were on their phone. This is the way to move. But again, I caution, just in terms of eligible media, to just be tight when you guys discuss it. What I did is I looked up Oregon, and I included this just for your guys' reference, is when they changed their laws, all they did was include E-newspapers, E-ditions, and then they also did that in North Dakota. So I provided copies for you guys to be able to see, and so they allow people to run in E-newspaper, in newspapers as well as E-ditions and E-newspapers. So I thank you for the opportunity today to speak on behalf of the Pacific Daily News, and I hope that during your discussions, you take the information that I've given you and consider the bill and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jay James from the PDN. And so at this point, I'd like to recognize the primary author for any questions or comments. Please proceed, Senator Barnes.
Si tuas mase, Mr. Chair. And before I ask my questions to Krista and Jay or Heidi, I want to first say that I did get a message from an attorney, a director from Public Defender, Stephen Hattori, who said, I am so sorry for missing the hearing on your bill this morning regarding the use of electronic media. I intended to submit testimony supporting using electronic forms of news media for announcements for like board meetings, et cetera. They tend to have a wider audience than than print media. I just wanted to make sure that that gets entered, Mr. Chair, and I will ask Attorney Steve Hattori to submit a written testimony, so thank you. My question is is for both Krista and Jay or even Heidi. The current law allows for television and radio stations to serve as platforms for public notices, and based on your knowledge of our local market, how many radio and television stations, including those operated by the PBS Guam and cable providers, are in operation? Can you answer, both of you?
Please turn on your mic and identify yourself.
Are you talking about specifically radio stations or both television and radio?
For allows for television and radio stations.
Uh, it's somewhere between nine and eleven.
Jay?
Nine.
Okay. Do you agree that a broadcast advertisement such as those made over the radio or television are not easy for residents to review, and meaning, let me share it this way, do you agree it is difficult to get information about an upcoming board meeting after it has been announced over the radio or television?
No, I do not have, I don't think there is any issue with people receiving information in that capacity, no.
Jay? I agree. It's difficult to get the information because radio is very fluid. If you publish a notice on the radio station, it is difficult to know when it's going to run, how it's going to run. Currently, right now, the Pacific Daily News does run legal notices, and in order for us to be in compliance, I have packaged our ads with radio, right? And so the question that is always asked by the radio station is, what time do you want it to run? And we have to pick a time, right? With website, with E-Edition, online, the difference is you can always go back, it's archival. You can go into the newspaper, GuamPDN.com, and you can date it, one-one-twenty-three, one-one-twenty-two, and you'll be able and you'll be able to pull up the entire e newspaper.
Thank you. I know that both your papers utilize your respective digital platforms to publicize these open government notices. Do you believe it is easier for your readers to get this information via your websites and social media accounts compared to a broadcast advertisement for both?
I do. I agree with Jay on that point. I do think that it's easier to read, and it's tangible. I've been in both electronic and print media over the course of 34 years in this career. And for government notices, for specific information that you want to remember, it's much easier to have something tangible holding in front of you or saved on your phone, something that you can look up, rather than waiting to hear it on the radio or waiting for it to run on television. Yes.
My answer is yes. GuamPDN.com, our website, has a tab at the top of the page on the main navigation, and it says classifieds. You click classifieds, there's a dropdown, and it says government notices, employment, real estate, and other, which is people who are selling classified items. You click that, and every single ad that currently, right now, that runs in the E edition is placed on that portal.
So, for the both of you, how much lower would a digital ad for a meeting notice be versus a print advertisement? Both of you?
Our print rate, right now, we have a preferred government rate. We are, with every purchased print ad, we run free of charge, the digital component. We do have similarly set up on our website a notices tab at the top, and every single ad, you can click on it, and it brings it up in full size so that you can read it. We additionally have an E edition that goes out. So every subscriber, we have 10,000 print subscribers, and we have 8,000 E edition subscribers. So, and we also currently send free E edition subscriptions to all of our advertisers, so they can forward their ads to anyone that requests it.
Jay?
Sorry, one second. Let me just calculate the difference.
Madam Speaker, if I could also say, it has been brought to our attention that we should offer just digital placements in the case that an agency would prefer to only run digital. And we do have a digital rate card that is about 20, 25% lower than the preferred government rate for print. And we do bundle those packages together as well. So, but right now, as an introductory sort of application to our new website page with the notices, we are offering it free of charge for anybody who purchases ads in the print.
Thank you. Jay?
To answer your question, when we were a print organization, I'm going to use maybe five years ago, even three to five years ago, a full page in the Pacific Daily News, when it was a print product, was $2,100. If you were to run a full page now, and just again, in comparison, the full page that we quote to agencies right now is $1,200. So that is the difference between what it was when it was print on my side and what it is now on the digital side. So yes, there is less of an expense, because I'm not paying for paper. I'm not paying for ink. I'm not paying for bodies. I'm not paying for delivery services. It's now digital. And the amount based off of that rate, the $1,200, which is the lowered amount, pays for the operation, pays for the website, that is 24/7.
Thank you. Do your, for both of you again, do your reporters regularly use the government web portal at notices.guam or gov? Recognizing that there are improvements that can be made, do you recognize that government meeting notices are found at this one singular platform?
I know they do, because I'm one of the ad builders, and we put in the ads for several agencies a referring link to the government portal, where you could also see the messages. As far as the reporters using them, the reporters usually ask us originally or through the sales department if we have any notices published in regard. Otherwise, they also look to the portal for more information.
Jay?
Similar. We use the portal, but because the news team has direct contact and direct relationships with the different agencies, most of the time, they're sent to us via press releases. But if we're in search of something, we do use the portal.
Si, Jesus, mase, for the both of you, both advertisers for sharing your presentation. Mr. Chair, I want to say, un dunklen, si, Jesus, mase, for letting me ask these questions. And this, Mr. Chair, is to merely demonstrate that digital ads have a lower cost and are easier to find, and that even today, you know, there is a single platform that any resident can visit to find this information, and that the website this legislature mandated to be operated will not go away just because this bill is passed into law. So I wanted to make that clear, Mr. Chair. And I think as we look at modern times and increasing our capability of reaching more and more of our local residents, and yes, there are a lot of us in the senior, senior ages, you know, that are over six decades, I always say computer a little bit. And I don't have a problem saying that. If I have a problem, I let my children fix this for me. But really, all kidding aside, I needed to bring that, to work with parity across the board, not, and make it easier access for all here on our island especially. And then making sure that we put regulations in place to keep it locally, locally run, right? That if we're going to advertise these meetings from the government entities, that it has to be from a local station. So, I mean, a local provider. So thank you, Mr. Chair. And I really hope that those listening and anyone else who wants to send written testimony in, please do so, because I think we talk about accountability and transparency all the time. This is a way of doing it with parity. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. At this time, I want to recognize Senator Gubatato. Comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And it's no secret I have a great relationship with my friends on the print side of the House, considering my years as a broadcast journalist. And just for the record, I was also part of the team that created the Sunshine Reform Act of 1999. So I just wanted to put that on the record. No questions for the panel, but just more comments that will help us, Mr. Chair, in the deliberation of this bill. I thank you to our author for talking about the fiscal waiver note. But I just had more of a question. We'll probably have to get it together on our side. Is that recognizing the costs involved in publishing public notices under the current requirements of the open government law, which could range from a couple of hundred dollars to several hundred dollars, depending on the size and color requirements of an ad, what data is available on the average amount of taxpayer dollars that is spent annually by public agencies, including the Guam Legislature, to meet this requirement? Also, Mr. Chair, 4GCA 8114 requires that any action taken at a meeting in violation of any section of the open government law, including the publication of public notices in approved platforms, shall be void and have no effect, provided that this nullification of actions taken at such meetings shall not apply to any commitment otherwise legal affecting the public debt of the entity concerned. And I think at the committee, we can find out what information is publicly known about violations specific to, one, a public agency failing to publish a public notice within five working days, and a second public notice at least 48 hours prior to the start of the meeting. And two, a public agency failing to publish their public notice in a newspaper of general circulation or by radio or television, as provided in current statute. Also, Mr. Chair, just one more comment. 5GCA 8104 also recognizes the term public notice to mean a publication by a newspaper of general circulation or by radio or television, which is reasonably calculated to provide notice of the facts and announces to the public at large and by electronic publication on the Guam public notice website. Just throwing it out there and for the committee to consider, what is the sentiment if a suggestion was made to allow a public agency's electronic publication on the Guam public notice website, and at a minimum, on the agency's website, the Guam Legislature's website, the governor's office website, and the unified judiciary of Guam's website, as satisfactory compliance to the public notice requirement of the open government law? Mr. Chair, just a bit of comments, and look forward to the markup on this bill. Thank you so much for being with us today. And I pass it over to our chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Gubatato. And the committee will consider your comments and recommendations. Si, Jesus, mase. Senator Luan, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We sit up here, actually, I don't see Senator Sabrina Saz-Batonani, but as a KUAM alumni as well. Four of us up here, or three of us here, right now. But I look forward to the markup as well, Mr. Chair. I know the goal is basically to try to get as much as possible all our notices information to the general public out there. And so I look forward to the markup. And again, I'm, you know, you know me with competition. I love competition. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Luan. Vice Speaker?
Perhaps, the, I know previously when you run an ad in the paper, you know, you got, you pay for a certain amount, and it runs that day, and perhaps that day only. In E edition, when you run an advertisement, that advertisement stays on that E, on the electronic format until... So you get, so perhaps you get, you can turn on your mic, your microphone.
When you run something online, once it runs online, it's online forever, unless the original person who put it up takes it down. So that's why when you search stories, you search bills, you search anything, it'll pop up.
So that's, I think that's the only comment that I have, is that the print versus the electronic. I mean, even with posts, when you guys publish onto the electronic version, it stays up as well, right? So I think it's just a matter of preference how folks would like to advertise, whether print or electronic or through television. So I think, you know, opening it up and having it a variety of avenues to advertise is always the best value for the dollars today. And hopefully that, you know, these things, we have to adjust to time. And that's one of the things that we need to do, is move forward and get these things looked at. And hopefully in the markup server, we can just get this in and get it onto our next session agenda. And if, you know, everything goes well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Ada. At this time, I'd like to recognize Senator Burnett.
Si, Jesus, mase, Mr. Chair. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. I find myself agreeing with all of the testimony here this morning. You know, as an old media guy, I totally understand where you're coming from, Krista, especially with these government notices. And for me, you know, the cost of transparency, the cost of accountability, the cost of getting this information out to our people, it's really negligible when you look at how much we spend on other things in the government. So I'm not really too keen on the cost argument. My thoughts are more, how do we keep this to legitimate types of media? Because for me, there's a huge difference between Guam Daily Post, Pacific Daily News, who reports on stories, uses facts and documents, and has to vet these stories, because there's, you know, potential for liability, potential to be sued if you, you know, use misinformation, you get it wrong, or whatever, versus political opinion blogs that masquerade as news by calling themselves news. And so what this bill, by my read, would basically allow is it would allow a situation where senators who receive favorable coverage, if you will, for lack of a better term, from political opinion blogs can now drive ad revenue to these political opinion blogs. And if you pay attention, and I do, we are already seeing some of these political opinion blogs really favorably covering certain senators in this legislature. And so for me, I'm not going to call it a bribe, I'm not going to call it extortion, but I am going to call it what it is, is that this bill creates that opportunity to reward individuals who skew, and I don't want to use the word news here, but who basically ramble about opinions and present them as facts. I mean, we had a situation in the 37 Guam Legislature where a certain blog accused the body of deleting security footage, where nothing could have been ever further from the truth, and at no time did we receive any opportunity really to engage in a meaningful way. And so basically, what this political opinion blog had done was went out and said that the legislature actually deleted this footage without ever verifying that. And so that's what I really worry about, is because, you know, this bill would allow for that. But it also allows for, based on my read, it allows for us to post these public notices for free on a channel that is controlled or determined by the government of Guam. So I don't necessarily support the bill as is. I think we need to keep and really strictly define newspaper of general circulation and, you know, digital versions of newspapers of general circulation. And then keep that. And then maybe run these notices on, you know, because they run in multiple places. We have the Guam notices portal, we have the legislative channel, we have the legislative website. But what this bill will create the opportunity for is for a senator or a government official to, in my opinion, haphazardly post a notice on a website that isn't even legitimate. And then they can say at the end of the day that, oh, I did my part, and no one shows up for the hearing, no one engages, the public doesn't know. And then we get special interest bills on the session floor. And so you're absolutely right, Krista. This is a very dangerous slippery slope disguised as an innocuous modernization measure. And I'm not ascribing any intent to the author or any of the senators, but I'm just simply speaking truthfully about what this bill, what opportunities it would create, especially as we head into the 2026 election. And so I just want to be completely honest with the people of Guam. That's what this bill does, is it creates opportunity for opinion blog websites to get paid ad revenue. And let me tell you right now, you put two and two together, ain't no opinion blog website going to talk bad about a senator who's giving them significant ad revenue to, you know, pad their pocket or whatever. And so that's what I worry about this. And I think when it comes to informing the public about the workings of our government, I'm not saying we need to go out there and spend $3 million, but you know, the cost of that, I think, is something that the people of Guam are, they accept and they're comfortable with. Because, you know, Tanana is still reading the newspaper. You know, I get both digital copies, and I pass them out to, you know, the chats that I'm in every single morning, both the Post and both the Pacific Daily News. And you know, so when I go out there and I talk with constituents, I talk with the Manumko, that's where they're at. Yes, they're going online, but they're not necessarily going on the political blogs. They're going on the legitimate media websites. And so that's my only concern, is that I feel like we need to keep these notices to what I think most would agree are legitimate media outlets, as opposed to the opportunity of providing, you know, political payoffs to people in exchange for favorable media coverage. And that's exactly what this bill would allow to happen, in my opinion. So si, Jesus, mase, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Senator Burnett. This time, I'll recognize Senator Cavell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everyone, for your testimonies. I, honestly, there are multiple benefits in this bill. My favorite ones, top in my list is two words, cost savings. Cost savings for government and public agencies. And I am for that, definitely. And obviously, increase in public accessibility. So, those are my two tops. But it also comes with modern So those are my two tops, but it also comes with modernization and digital adaptation, greater transparency and public engagement. Now, while I support the spirit of this legislation, I just have some minor, very minor concerns, but I think they're valid concerns. And it's about implementation and potential unintended consequences. I know that this will improve accessibility. However, I'm concerned about barriers that it may create at the same time, particularly for individuals without reliable internet services. And obviously, the Manomko, as you mentioned. I just want to make sure that we ensure that in our effort to modernize or to move forward with this bill, we do not inadvertently leave behind the very people that rely on these notices the most. I'm the oversight for Manomko and underserved communities, so these are the things that comes to my mind first and foremost. That being said, I want to commend Senator Tina Munya Barnes for bringing forward a bill that challenges us to think critically about government transparency during this time of digital age. And I look forward to continued dialogue on this matter and hope we can work together to refine this bill to best serve the people of Guam. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Cavill. Senator Taitagui, you recognize?
Sidoz Masi, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for being here today. And yes, I remember when this bill was being heard last year, I was here. Students supported it because I felt that, you know, it's the new age. I mean, I oversee technology and, you know, I even was on the radio the other day talking about AI and, you know, the ability to maneuver it into the government of Guam. But to do it responsibly is first and foremost, and I think that's why rules and regulations are put in place. This legislation, I'm in support of. However, I'm not in support of that section that says another eligible media platform, like you mentioned last year. I totally agree. I mean, let's just talk about the elephant in the room. I'm going to ask you a question, Christine. Is candid a legitimate, as you said, a legitimate news media resources? What was the word that you used, James? Alleged, legitimate, right? News media. And not one to plagiarize, you know, by taking news articles from somewhere else and just putting it on somebody's website will, doesn't legitimize yourself. So my question, actually, I'm just getting off track because there's just so much issues with this situation here. We are entrusted with the government, the people's money to make sure that that funding is used correctly for the mass public to be informed. So again, I'm sorry, I'm digressing, you know, I'm digressing. Do you think candid news is a legitimate media source?
I wouldn't call it a media source.
Would you call it a blog?
It's a blog.
It's a blog.
And it is an opinion-based blog.
Yeah, that most likely one-sided all the time. And you, Mrs. James?
I agree.
Oh, can you too?
I agree. It is a blog. The concern that I have with this bill, which I mentioned, the caution behind it, is the fact that they would qualify. If they had a website, they provided news content, they provided opinions, they would qualify. Again, similar to me, I'll quit my job now just so that I can bid on, and I will. And here's the other thing, and this is the new day and age, and this is what we also caution ourselves because we've put stops on people who have done this on their own sites where they take PDN's content, they copy paste it onto AI, it respits out news content, and they put it up on their site. And so that's what they're doing. And what we do is we test it. We take it, we cut and paste it, and there are certain words that you know are AI. And so we do that as a check and balance that nobody takes the work that we do and recreates websites or Instagram pages that now become eligible as a news organization, not with the work that we do every single day.
And you also are responsible, you know, you could be sued very easily. You have a standard that you have to comply with, not just, you know, within your own, you know, personal as a business, but you have an ethic, oral, I mean, ethic obligation, you know, to the public and you stand by, like a doctor, you know, they have their ethics to stand by, and so does the media as well. And we have to rely on this. I mean, you definitely don't stop people from buying your newspaper because you don't like them or don't want it. I mean, it's out there for everyone to see and your opinions, whether I like some of them or not, or it's not all the truth that's put in there. You are clear that when you're taking a quote from someone, it's clear that they said this, you know? You don't try to make up a story, you know, to adjust. I think Senator Burnett made it clear. I mean, he was so, you know, he said it all. And being a person in the media, he knows. He definitely knows what plagiarism is too as well. And what is so disingenuous is, you know, we could have somebody on our staff right now, well, I don't, you know, somebody, one senator who has, somebody who has a web, one of their employees has a website. You know, this is definitely a conflict of interest because now she's going to take her budget and then purchase ads on her employees. Could that happen? I mean, I don't think even a senator should even vote on this bill if that section where says another alleged media platform. Anybody can open one up.
That was my point. You know, it opens it up, that other media outlets or the other media, the vagueness of that could potentially mean anyone could open a website, get a Guam business license, and put some news headlines out there. And we similarly have the same thing happen where AI is, you know, used to change our story just enough that they could post on their site. So that was my initial fear, that no one is going to know where to find these notices. It isn't about anything other than just notifying the public. That's what we're here to talk about, notifying the public of what you all intend to do and what the government agencies intend to do. So why is it so difficult? I think the easiest, the easiest version of this could be just to include who is already authorized their websites. Very simple, just in addition to the broadcast or the digital side of, include the digital side of their business. So KUAM would be included, any radio station would be included that has a website, you could also use it there. And it would actually benefit us as well because there are times when the agency is very, very late and we are well past deadline for them to try and post their notice. And we have stopped, we've stopped everything, held off so that we can add their notice to comply with the law. And so it would really benefit us as well to be able to say, okay, it's okay, we'll just put this one on the website and we'll put it and publish it the next day in print. So it really does seem just extra to include all of these other potentials.
Well, thank you for that. And I believe it's important that how we spend the people's money is done, you know, so that we ensure that we get the best bang for their buck. And right now, it's to be able to reach the mass majority of this island for information that is critical to this government so that they have a voice to be here today to speak on it or even to write to any of us senators that, oh, I heard this bill is coming up, I can't make it, and I would like to give you my take on it, my opinion, and how it will benefit or hurt my family. And that's what we need, a responsibility as lawmakers, we need to do. So I thank you again for being here again, Ms. James, for what you testified last year and again this year and sticking to your gun and the same perspective. Thank you again, Christine. And believe it or not, you know, I appreciate, you know, touching, I'm old school, I like to feel the paper, I like to, you know, read it that way. However, and you're still providing online. However, it's going to get to a phase, maybe one day you might do what PDN did where they had both going and then finally realized.
One day for sure, but we hope not anytime soon.
Well, thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Taitagui. And at this time, we'll recognize Senator Chalai. Maybe just before I do that, I think they were wanting to speak on that comment, if you're okay with that. Yeah, please proceed, Heidi.
Hi, I'm Heidi Gilbert. I'm the managing editor for the Pacific Daily News. I just want to say that this bill needs some tightening, especially the definition of other eligible media. And to Senator Chris Burnett and Senator Taitagui's comments, I think that, you know, later on, maybe when the Guam Daily Post or the Pacific Island Times also follow the Pacific Daily News lead to go digital, right? And then we come back here again for the same issue. Say this bill doesn't pass today, we come back here when another newspaper goes full digital. So maybe one of the suggestions is to really redefine what eligible media is, maybe focus on previous newspapers that have gone full digital, and then you've already closed that loophole, right? Because you do not want fly-by-night businesses, someone who can create a website today, get some news there, send somebody to report on something and then put it in their website, and then they will be under this current definition, they'll be eligible to get government public notices. But that suggestion, if you only focus on media that have gone, media organizations that have gone full digital but previously were print newspapers, will that satisfy that concern? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for our committee report purposes, I didn't, I don't know if you identified yourself, so can you just do it again?
Yes, I'm Heidi Gilbert. I'm the managing editor for the Pacific Daily News. And prior to this position, I was a journalist for decades.
Thank you, Heidi. Senator Chalai, you may proceed.
Sidoz Masi, thank you for testifying today. I really appreciate it. I very much hear your concerns. I'm very concerned about that myself because, you know, we have some trust that we have built up in the newspapers that have really put these large gigantic investments into our community, and we see them struggle and we see them, you know, if they are going to leave. When PDN shifted to online, I know you pointed out the business part of it, but for the consumer part of it, it was very traumatic, I think, especially for our Manomko who received the papers at their houses. And I really appreciate, you know, part of the testimony from the Post that says Guam is unique in that print newspapers are still a vital part of the information landscape. I believe that's true. We have a lot of Manomko that are tech savvy, but we still have, even surprising to me, veterans. They're so organized, they have excellent organizations, they are able to accomplish anything they set their mind to, but they do that by newspaper, by phone, by, you know what I mean? They are not doing it by digital necessarily, reading things digitally. I still find that phone calls are more effective or, yeah, and they get their news. I ask a lot, since this bill came up last year and was tabled, I've asked, I tried to ask as many people as I can, where do they get their news? A lot of them are getting it on the, well, legislative news particularly, they watch on TV, they can get that cable station or they'll get it into, in one of the papers, right? But they also say, the Post says that, they say, especially our Manomko, I find that to be true myself. If there was a study, maybe, you know, I'd be convinced otherwise. And I do, I may agree that, you know, maybe in ten years, we might all, I will be that Manomko age, so maybe my generation, we could put the duty on us to like get digital, you're not going to get any news. But the older ones, I do not want to put that, if they want to get it in, then I think we can. And so what we're talking about here is we want public notice because we want public participation. We want testimony, we want them to participate in their government. It's the nationwide principle behind open government, public participation. If they don't participate, we are going to go back to those days of they didn't know what was going on, they were not able to voice their opinion, corruption happens because meetings, we, nobody knows the meetings are going on. And I'm actually finding, maybe we are slipping a little already as opposed to, because we've had a couple public hearings in this term and I can't find the notices. So they might be published, as you say, on radio, which according to our law is legitimate. I personally did most of mine in printed media because I want to make sure that we can catch everybody, and I know it will also be digital. But I did not want to exclude the Manomko for knowing anything that I thought was important going on. But the radio ads are hard because we can put them on any time of the day, there is no restriction at all. They can publish the radio ads at midnight, they can publish the radio ads, you know, at 3:00 PM while everybody's at work. It's just, as like you say, hard to go back to that too and find out, what did they say? Was that 10 o'clock, 2 o'clock today or tomorrow? It's very, very hard. No one sits around the radio with a notebook. But that's why these, what you guys are doing and all of, even the people who were saying we have to be concerned whether we're going to put our, we're going to pay for ads there and that will take care of our ad requirement as a government, they're all doing a great public service. But yeah, I agree. We want to recognize what is unique in our community, we want to recognize who are we trying to force to convert, right? And if we can continue to accommodate our Manomko, I would like to do that. And this part about they should publish or a television channel controlled by the government of Guam or even websites controlled by government agencies, I feel like they should absolutely do that anyways, absolutely should be mandatory. It should be mandatory like our public notice portal, website, that was supposed to take care of that, where we've got radio, TV, or newspaper, we have still one site. So if you heard it once, perhaps you can go back there and find it because that is a concern. But I wanted to ask you.
Yeah, Senator Chalai, you can wrap up with this question.
All right. We still see, you know, across the nation, newspapers, right? We also see federal government advertisements in newspapers and we find, like you say, the classified ads, the, what do you call those? Those legal notices from the courts are also required to be in the newspapers. The, are there any laws that federal or campaign laws or FCC, I'm not sure, that govern how you publish, for example, campaign materials? Are you, would you say that newspapers are restricted by any other federal laws?
It's not a restriction, it's more of a suggestion, making sure that you're giving fair space, I would say, to any candidates of any particular office or any federal programs, that if there was opposing views that you, it's suggested that you give the same amount of space, but there's no real requirement. of space, but there's no real requirements or mandates. But there are for some of the federal government agencies, they do still have on some of their books that they need to publish notices for anybody who might be from our community but have moved, you know, to the states in their general area. And when there's any sort of legal proceeding, sometimes that happens as well, where a legal entity in the states will reach out to us and say that they're required by law to run an ad for so many, yeah, so many days or consecutive days, that sort of thing.
For public notices, I'm sorry, for campaigns, there are requirements, the only federal requirement that they have states that everybody has to have the same playing field. So when it comes to rates or packages, if I offer you a rate, it has to be the same across the board. So that's on the campaign side, and it can run whenever it runs.
And are those rules applied to, who are they applied to?
To all the candidates.
Senator Chalai, thank you very much.
No, I'm sorry, would they be applied?
Yeah. That would be your final question, Senator Chalai. Everybody's had the same time.
I do want to just answer the question in terms of federal legal notices. When there's a road closure, when the on-base wants to do a public hearing or a meeting notification, there are requirements that they have, and they are required to run it in a newspaper of general circulation. The only thing different from the federal law to the local law is that the local law defines printed newspaper, and that's where we don't qualify. But when it says newspaper of general circulation, because it says only newspaper of general circulation, we qualify and we're allowed to run those ads.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to recognize the main sponsor, Senator Tina Munha Barnes, to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And in lieu of closing, I just have a couple of really short questions I'd like to ask, if I may, it's just almost a yes and no. Mr. Chair?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Jay and Krista, or Post and PDN, do you believe in the American democratic value of free press?
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you think the government determining what news organizations are legitimate or not in line with the democratic value of free press? Yes or no?
I do.
I do. Okay. Do you consider the Pacific Island Times and the publications from Glimpses of Guam as legitimate news organizations?
Yes, I do.
I do not.
Okay.
And the only reason why is because it is not a daily publication. If notices are supposed to run in a daily notification, if I have a meeting and it has to come out two weeks prior, it has to come out on this date. If they do not have a publication running on that date, it can't run in that publication.
So I'm just going to ask this last question. Would you guys object to these companies being included in our open government law?
I would not.
I would not.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity. Thank you for hearing this bill. I think this is a very critical, critical bill. I don't think the government is in any position to choose what media outlets can come in or not, that's already here. I think it's important that when we look at accountability and transparency, that there should be a fair opportunity across the board for everybody out there who qualifies, whether you like them or not, if they qualify, that they should be included. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this measure, and I hope that my colleagues can really look at the criticalness of this and support the efforts of transparency and accountability, and giving the opportunity to reach the majority of our island residents here on our island of Guam. Sign him as see.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. So this will conclude this morning's public hearing on bills numbers 1034 and 2538. The committee will continue to accept written testimony on these bills within seven days from today, which may be addressed to myself. Senator Christopher M. Duñez, as chairman of the committee, mailed to 163 West Chalans Antapapa in Agatia. You may also send your testimonies to senator.duñez@guamlegislature.gov. The committee will also return today at 2:00 PM to hear bills number 1438 and 4738 at the request of the author. As advertised, bills 1738 and 1638 will be rescheduled. That concludes the public hearing on these bills for this morning, and it is currently 11:57. Sidoos Massey, and have a great day.